The tape.
We are recording.
Okay. Um. Good evening. It's March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and this is special meeting of the town council. In fact, it is a retreat. However, because we are meeting as a body, we have to have this as an open meeting. But we are allowed to do that by not having quorum physically present. And this particular meeting is accessible by real time via Zoom and by phone. And we will continue. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I am calling the March twenty seven, twenty twenty four Special Town Council to meeting to order at six fourteen. I apologize for the delay, but frankly, we decided that some of us wanted to eat some dinner, and we didn't want to do that in front of an audience. I'll call upon each councillor by name. They have the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic and let us know that you are present. Um. And then remember to mute your mic again. Patty Angeles.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Goth.
Present.
Um. I'm sorry, I was distracted. Councillor Ette is still waiting.
He's on his way.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Councillor Hanke.
Present.
Uh, Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
Here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Present.
Councillor Walker.
Present.
Thank you. There's no chat room for this meeting, and if you have technical issues, make sure we know. And if we have to, we'll disrupt the meeting. Um, or and discussion may be suspended. Given that this is a special meeting of the town council for the purposes of retreat, there is no public comment, period. We do not have any announcements, but I'm going to suggest that we pause briefly. Well, until councillor Ette gets here.
I'm not sure he will. He will get here that quickly.
Okay, then I'm going to ask Athena, who is going to do a opening exercise with us.
Thanks for indulging me in doing this. I I really like these opening exercises because it gives us a chance to pause and sort of enter the room fully. And I thought it would be appropriate to begin with this poem. I'm going to give you a very bite-sized version of a little introduction to what's called council practice. It's a an ancient practice that was, I mean, you can think about people gathered around a fire as being the original form of council practice. And it has been practiced in First Nation peoples and continues to be practiced all over the world today, notably in the California prison system, in maximum security prisons with men serving life sentences. And those practices included victims incarcerated people and those working in the criminal justice system. It's been transformative in schools, nonprofit organizations, hospitals, law enforcement agencies, faith-based communities, and jails. So the essence of council practice is to just listen fully to each other, speak from the heart, be spontaneous, and let things arise, and be lean of speech and consideration for how much time we have, considering that we started the meeting a little bit late. I'm going to ask us to move kind of quickly through this exercise, and it's going to be very brief. So this is really just to get us thinking about listening to each other and taking time to fully listen to each other. I think when we have these meetings on Zoom, there's a strong tendency to raise your hand before the person who's speaking has even finished speaking, which indicates to me that, you know, you can't listen to someone and think of your own next words at the same time. And so I'd like to take a moment to really slow down and think about what listening means. So I'm giving yourselves a chance to reflect on these questions. I'd like to go around and if you can be lean of speech and listen from the heart to each other, speak from the heart about what is touching you with these words. Speak spontaneously. You don't have to rehearse what you're going to say. And whoever is moved to speak first, please go ahead. You can raise your hand when a thought arises. Pat?
The person in my life, one of them who is an excellent listener, is Willie Meyer. I met him in prison. At prison in Connecticut, where I was going to participate in an alternative to violence project. He was one of the inmates and was one of the facilitators. Um. You share personal things in these workshops, and I talk, I'm trying to be lean. I talked about some of my growing up, which was violent, and ways that I felt like it marked me. And Willie heard me. Worldwide Will was his acronym. He heard me at such a deep level that I was stunned during the break when he spoke with me. And eventually I became one of the facilitators because of his willingness to really listen.
Thank you for sharing that. Councillor Lord.
I have a friend, I'm not going to name her name, but who is a very excellent listener. I know because she looks at me. Her phone can go off and her head does not turn. And I tend to pause. I need to think and take time. And a lot of other people jump right in with a response. And she gives me all the time I need. I think those three things really tell me. And then she really hears me even deeper than my words sometimes because I use them to not express a harm or a pain or a struggle. And because she takes the time to really listen, she can excavate those things.
Thank you. Anna.
I have a friend who recognizes that sometimes my brain goes faster than my mouth. And when I'm speaking or when I need her support, she's able to recognize my intention as well as my direct words. And she can push back in a way that sees that. And that's the thing I deeply value is it's not just a kind of tacit agreement. There's she demonstrates understanding by sometimes challenging or asking questions that show she was paying attention even when I am not lean, and I have been going around in circles for five minutes. And she pauses or stops me. And I think that for me personally is something that is really helpful for the way that my brain engages in conversation.
Thank you. Councillor Walker, I'm recognizing that you're on Zoom. Is there something you'd like to share? You don't have to.
Yeah, thank you. I'm thinking of my sister, who is an excellent listener, and I feel like part of it is because she really knows me very well and has known me for obviously my entire life. And so I think a lot of the times when I'm talking to her, she can dissect what I'm saying as as it reflects deeper in just the moment, but as it relates to my past and to things that we've experienced before. And something that I really love about talking to my sister is that she usually sort of lets me go first because I will go and go and go. And then she says, what do you want from me? Do you just want me to listen? Do you want me to give you advice? Do you like, how do you want me to answer this? And I really appreciate that from her because sometimes I don't want someone to say anything. I just want someone to listen. And sometimes I need guidance, and that's what I need. But allowing me to choose that is something that I feel that makes me feel really heard. And it also makes me feel really understood because sometimes I go into things without saying what it is that I need or want as an outcome. And so again, it's just like she makes me take the time to think about what it is that I'm really saying and what it is that I really need in that moment. And that's really special to me.
Thank you. Paul and Dave, I'm also recognizing that you're in our circle. If there's anything you'd like to share, or if anything else, anyone else would like to share something. Lynn?
So one of the people that I have always seen as an excellent listener is a former colleague at the University of Massachusetts. And one of the reasons I would know he was listening was because he would ask me to think about something in a different way by asking questions. And I never completely realized the value of that until I was actually doing a case study at the Kennedy School, and it was because somebody dared to ask questions differently that our nation was actually prevented from being affected by swine flu.
Thank you. Councillor Ryan.
I have a good friend. We don't do this often, but we will go for long walks on the bike path. And we just talked for about an hour or so, trying not to get run over by cyclists and roller players. Like Anna, I know he's listening because he asked me good questions. He's someone that very helpful for me. So I'm due for another walk on the bike path.
Thank you all for sharing and for taking the time to think about this. I'm going to leave you with a quote by Marshall Rosenberg, who is an American psychologist who helped develop nonviolent communication. And I invite you to bring what you recognize in other people who are good listeners into the meeting tonight.
Thank you. Um. Councillor Ette, are you connected yet? No. Okay, take your time, but why don't you just push your mic and say, present? And that way we know you're here.
Present.
Thank you. And if you would like to catch up and have some dinner, just stay off video. Okay? Um, so the next agenda item, I would like us to spend twenty minutes max, if possible. It's an agenda item called meeting management, and it's intentionally broad. There are many issues the councillors might want to bring up. But among them, I hope we will focus on the last few meetings of the town council. When we were confronted with a whole series of challenges to our obligation to ensure a peaceable and orderly process. We regularly anticipate that public comment section of the meeting might be challenging and have part have put in place clear procedures to ensure that members of the public can express their opinions without interruption or contention. In my view, this has worked reasonably well, except for offensive public comments like we had last week or two weeks ago. And some audience responses following comments that take away from other speakers' time. At one of our recent meetings, when it came time for councillors to do their work, to do our work, the situation deteriorated, and what should have been an orderly discussion of difficult choices facing the council became a confused and chaotic scene. I have already made some adjustments in my own meeting management, but look forward to making more. They include asking people if they need a reading period, if particularly if something has been added into the packet at the last minute. Calling for a recess when people could not hear, and seeking a motion and a vote to adjourn. I've heard many concerns expressed by members of the council and the public about how the council will ensure this scenario is not repeated. It is a matter, it is not a matter of the public's interest versus the council's interest. If the council cannot carry out its responsibilities in a thoughtful and deliberate way, then the public cannot be served. So as you might imagine, Athena and I and others have discussed this at length. And so we want to begin this discussion with some clarification about how the council can utilize and our rules, rules and our procedures during meetings. So Athena is going to start out by addressing peaceable and offensive public comments.
So what the rules don't include is really what to do in each scenario, because there are so many scenarios that can come up. And the rules don't say, if this happens, then here's what we do. There are motions that you can make, and there's rules about what people should and shouldn't do at meetings, but it doesn't say if this happens, then here's what we all do. And so I'd like to clarify some of those ways that you can address these situations according to our rules, according to the council's rules. So in Rule Six Code of Conduct, there are rules about councillor's code of conduct in six one A, and audience code of conduct in six two C. And both of them refer to being order, behaving in orderly procedure and not being disruptive during the meeting. Both of them say that if the presiding officer finds that the meeting is being disrupted, that a recess can be called. If any councillor finds that the meeting is being disruptive, disruptive, they can request the president call a recess, or they can make a motion to recess. I'll get later on, we'll come back to what to do if you can't hear. But I think there were certainly councillors at the meeting earlier this month who couldn't hear what was going on. I know Lynn couldn't hear what I was saying and so on. So there is a motion in the rules, seven point one, that says, raise a question of privilege. And the rules don't really explain what that means, but a question of privilege is there's so much noise in this room that I can't hear what people are saying. Or you could raise a point of order that you can't hear what's going on, or you don't know the motion on the table, or you don't know what what's happening in the meeting. And councillors can raise that as an issue to help the president manage the meeting at that time. To address some of the offensive public comments, GOL took this up very recently because we had the Supreme Judicial Court reading about the Southborough case. And so there was some conversation at GOL about public comment, but it, I don't think the committee really got into First Amendment rights as in-depth as what we've been dealing with now. And first, I'm going to say something that was said originally by Abraham Lincoln, referring to the First Amendment. Nothing but the very sternest necessity can ever justify abridging the liberties of the people. A government had better go to the very extreme of toleration than to do aught that could be construed as an interference with or jeopardize in any degree the common rights of its citizens. The courts have been very protective of freedom of speech, which includes hate speech. There are only certain, certain categories of speech that the First Amendment does not protect, which include fighting words, true threats, harassment, and incitement of imminent lawless action. Calling an individual commenter a derogatory term, particularly if that comment threatens violence or harm against them, can be regulated as hate speech. Violent words directed to an individual or their family can be regulated as hate speech and inciting violence. What can't be regulated is commenting about people as a group. And so it's very difficult to regulate the content of speech without getting into issues of First Amendment rights. Maintaining a neutral, dispassionate tone and expression and treating each speaker equally will discourage attacks at meetings and will help protect the council from legal challenges claiming an infringement of constitutional rights. There was a lower court ruling about regulating the content of speech in terms of matters within the jurisdiction of the body. And because that was a lower court ruling, which allowed a body to restrict comments only to matters within its jurisdiction as a way to manage its meetings, that hasn't been challenged to a higher court. And so my advice to the council president and other chairs has been to restrict merely the time, place, and manner. So if someone is not shouting out during a meeting, that can't. And they're just taking their two or three-minute public comment period. I've said they get their two or three public comment period. That's how they exercise their freedom of speech, and that's really the most regulation that we can do without being challenged.
So one of the other things, and I did mention this earlier, and that is that on a periodic basis, new material is introduced at the meeting. And what we really want to do is encourage people, if the person who is presiding doesn't suggest it, to just say, I need a reading period, or can we recess while I read these materials? So that people don't feel that they haven't had time to absorb the materials. Athena?
I've already touched on what councillors can do if they can't hear during the meeting, or if there's something else that's disrupting the meeting that the chair isn't addressing. And I just want to highlight the fact that it's the thirteen of you who are participating in this together. And if you feel that the council president or the chair of the meeting isn't paying attention to the issue that's going on, then the the other twelve of you can raise a point of order or a point of personal privilege to address that issue. The next thing Lynn had asked me to speak about was the best way to consider parliamentary questions during a meeting. And in conversations with Lynn and other chairs several times, I've advised that we slow down a little bit because at meetings, sometimes it can feel like an emergency to make a decision and to figure out what we do next. And sometimes we just need one minute, or we just need forty-five seconds to think about what to do next, or confer with someone to figure out what's going on before we take a next step. So my advice in any question of parliamentary procedure, or in terms of following the council's rules, or anything else that we're unsure of in a meeting, is to take a brief pause and collect ourselves and answer a question before we move on.
So I see several hands, and we'll move to that in a moment. I recognize that the responsibility for an orderly and thoughtful process ultimately resides not just with the person presiding, but with the whole body. Are there other thoughts that you would like to offer to me as the presiding officer of the council, or to chairs and to the council at large regarding the conduct of our meetings? Please feel free to do so now or in the future. Proposed rule changes should come as proposals to the council. So I'm going to go ahead and call on George Ryan.
I see it as two separate. I see it as two separate issues. The first has to do with obvious hate speech, which is what we encountered the last meeting. It's not addressed to anything we're doing. It's just hate speech. And I wonder if we're just too afraid of being sued to simply say that that kind of speech is just not acceptable. So that's the first thing. It's just, you know, people get angry, people accept. I mean, I looked at the Southborough case. I'm sure many of you did as well. It seemed to be pretty much a no-brainer. And the court ruled correctly, but I don't see how that leads to the conclusion that if someone comes and just starts uttering hateful words, that's somehow an exercise of the First Amendment freedom. It seems like content has to be, I mean, there has to be something they're trying to address to what we're doing and what's in front of us as a matter. And clearly, that's not what was happening, at least in one or two cases the last time. What if somebody comes and wants to just utter pornographic words because they get off on that sort of thing? Is that, we just sit there for two minutes while that happens? I realize this is difficult. I guess I struggle with the idea that somehow because the lawyers have said, there's nothing we can do. And we just sit back and I wonder if we just don't invite a suit. I mean, what's wrong with being sued? I'd like to see a Southborough-like decision by the Supreme Judicial Court where they quote the words of the person who, right, they did it in the Southborough case, and we all read it, and we thought, yeah, they're right. The presiding officer was out of bounds, their rules were way too extreme. It made sense. I'd like to see a similar case where someone does what would happen to us two weeks ago and put the words in their decision then. I'd like to see that. If they're willing to do that, fine. Anyway, that's one. The other is, what happened to us? In other words, there's the issue, what happens when people come and do and speak hateful ways, and how do we deal with that? Then there's the issue of what we do when a meeting is out of control. We actually did recess. Took a while, but we recessed. Then we came back, and it was still out of control, and we never adjourned. So I need to hear from my colleagues, whether they share my sense that we should have adjourned. That meeting was out of control. We needed, as the Northampton council did, we needed to stop, come back, and do it in a manner where we could hear each other and talk to each other. But we didn't. We went ahead. We had votes. We made a decision. So if people think that's okay, they need to say so. I think that it was very much not okay. I was upset by it then, upset by it now. So I need to hear from you, because I've spoken enough on it. So I'm going to be lean and stop. But it seems two issues. One is, what happens when people do hateful or say hateful things to us? How do we deal with that? The other is, what do we do about our own behavior when the meeting is out of control?
Pam Rooney?
I wanted to react to the the comment about we could always have a reading period if something is is has been presented to us. That's that's an alternative, I think, but in the in a setting where there's a great deal of emotion and engaged in the in the process, seeing something for the very first time in in the face of great emotion, I think it puts everyone an unfair advantage. And I don't think we should ever be discussing something that we had never seen before. There was no hard copy for us to look at. I didn't see it until it was, you know, part of the words were being read, or it just was not, it put us in a really bad spot to be reacting to what was being presented. And I think it puts it puts it puts us in a bad light, but it also it doesn't allow us to do our best work. I think we could have, we could have responded in different manners had we digested what was being presented.
Bob Hegner?
I'm gonna, I was gonna bring up a separate issue, so I'll just pass for now.
Okay. Andy?
Yeah, I'm glad I'm following what Pam just said, because what I found very difficult about the beginning of that meeting, and I think haunted throughout the meeting, was about the beginning of that meeting and I think haunted throughout the meeting was that changes were made to the motion before the motion was offered, but we didn't have the, so we didn't have the motion that we were going to be dealing with. And that's unusual for us. As a council, we, I can't recall an occasion where a motion has been so significantly changed between what was posted and what we then were discussing, which then put me in an awkward position because I had prepared a red line version showing deletion seditions to a motion that I expected to be coming forward, which was not the motion that came forward. So I was in a very strange position of trying to explain motions and pieces that were really needed to be looked at as a whole to under, and judged as a whole to understand. So I think that there were just sort of problems that, right from the beginning, and I think it was a variety of reasons that that happened. Obviously, there were some members of the audience who were very engaged in a disruptive way. There were some, there was confusion for the reasons that I have just stated. And there was a lack of ability to really focus on a discussion of what was the, we couldn't discuss the motion on the floor, as noted, because we didn't have the motion on the floor. So there were, it was a whole lot of different problems that came about. And I'm going to include by reflecting on what I heard about how North Hampton handled a similar situation over the same issue at its council meeting. And it adjourned the council meeting without making a decision and reconvened after 48 hours' notice on Zoom. And it was able then to have a more orderly conversation and to actually reach a result that belonged to the council. And I just don't think that we were there. It was not, we didn't end up, we did end up with a motion, and it is what was voted, and I accept that. But I think that the process really was problematic, and I'm not convinced that the motion would have been the same had we been in this room with the technology that's available to us in this room and had been able to proceed in our normal course of business.
A couple of things. Amendments are part of our job. Amendments night of are part of our job. To suggest that we should never discuss something that we have never seen before potentially means we should never amend anything or we should delay every time there's an amendment on the floor. I can't agree with that. We have had substitute motions presented by Kathy Shane in the past five years that are completely different from what's on the floor that we've had to deal with night of to say that what happened on that night was unique is not the case. It's selective memory in my mind of what this council over five years has done at meetings during motions. I think when a motion is potentially a motion to amend or a motion is a potential surprise, taking time and a recess to get it on everyone's screen so everyone can read is the right thing to do, not to, to take the time. And if it's still there, then there are methods within our rules that can be used to need more time. We could also potentially take advantage of Court DICTA in prior cases that has indicated that if opinions are posted to the public first, that they can be put in the packet and distributed to all council members. We've never really taken advantage of that. I know Kathy has pushed us to do so with memos she's written and all. Our clerk and our president had every motion that counselors wanted to make before that meeting, but did not put it out to all the counselors or many of the motions because they asked for them. If they had been put in the packet by a certain deadline, all counselors could have had that. And Court DICTA has indicated that that might not have, likely does not violate open meeting law and can be done, so we can rethink our procedures. As to George's two issues, we're a government body, and the First Amendment is broad. It's very distasteful to have to sit and listen to that. But we need to. Because if we start regulating some speech, what, where does it stop? Do you not have to listen to what you don't want to hear? Even if it's not hate speech, what is deemed hate speech? Different people believe different things on what hate speech is. I think there are other ways that we could consider dealing with it if it continues to happen and if that type of, what I believe is non-resident speaking continues to happen, there are other ways to deal with that. Removing Zoom public comments, not necessarily ideal. I'm not arguing for it, but it's something to consider if it keeps happening. Pre-registration, like is required in Cambridge or Somerville. Serious pre-registration, like by 5:00 PM, web forms, pre-registration is potential. You know, there are other ways to deal with it. And as for your other, Counselor Ryan, your other question, the recess is what we should have done, another recess on that night, not adjourn, and tried to get it under control through taking breaks.
George, I'm sorry, Robert. Bob, do you want to come back to you, or shall I go on to Anna?
No, you can, you can move on.
Anna?
So to Pam and Andy's point, and, well, addressing Pam and Andy's point, but I think echoing what Mandy just said, what Counselor Hanke just said, we have always had the ability to make edits and make amendments. I'm curious about exploring the idea of specifying a limit on edits, but I'm really even uncomfortable saying that because then it is limiting our ability to do our jobs. In the instance, we, that, that's being discussed, we did have the, the motion and the original text. And Andy, like you said, folks brought amendments. I think to say that the sponsors can't bring amendments to their own resolution or proclamation is now privileging non-sponsors of any given proclamation or resolution. Because to your point, Andy, I hadn't seen your redlined version. How is that any different than the sponsors bringing amendments? Not allowing them that privilege as a counselor, I think, would be inappropriate. We can't send them ahead of, well, Mandy's got some fancy new thing, but until tonight, my understanding was we can't send them ahead of time without violating open meeting law. Printing them out ahead of time and distributing them to the council would have also been a violation. We need to have the ability to make amendments, and I prefer those amendments to be thought out ahead of time and then able to be discussed as we do. George, I think the, I like the idea of saying, we're not scared of a lawsuit, we're going to stand up for what's right. My concern is that we'd be the next Southborough, but worse. And that's something that we really didn't want to have happen would suddenly become protected. I'm not saying that is the reality, but I think that's my concern with it, right? Is, is that if we did it, it would go all the way through those courts, just like Southborough did, and then become another thing that we can't regulate in any way and get, and get worse. One of the things that I am curious about is if there's a way to work with our state delegation or with other folks to look at open meeting law and what open meeting law says about public comment, to see, and, and public access, and consider how there might be more protections against hate speech in that way without violating the First Amendment. It's a vague thought, but open meeting law governs a lot of what we do and does talk about public engagement and public comment. So I'm curious about that as an avenue as well. I'm done. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I was the only counselor that was remote, so I wasn't in the room. So I feel like I did have a different experience than everyone else. I mean, I was sort of more looking in from the outside. It seemed to me that we, the, where things went off the rails is that the, well, there was a response, reaction from the audience, and I think from the sponsor, counselor sponsors, that there was resistance to the council making any amendments. So that's, so just the fact that amendments were made and that then ultimately they were voted on, that, that wasn't, again, that, that's when things, I think, the audience became angry. And when, so I had a resident at a district meeting raise the question, and then he wrote again today, because I guess he had gone to look at the rules of procedure. And the first recess, what the, what did the sponsors ask for the recess? And when they came back from the recess indicating that the council sponsors, if the amendments, because I guess the amendments had been voted at that point, I can't, that they no longer wanted to be sponsors? And is it true that Rules of Procedure 8.8 say that if the sponsors are going to take their names off, that has to be on the agenda? So I just wonder if there's different points at which we, you know, because we were on, I guess, new territory, that we, our Rules of Procedure might have directed us to go in different directions, but we, you know, didn't go back and look at them.
Athena, do you want to speak to that?
Council Rules 8.8 state, "At the request of any sponsor or sponsors of a measure, a measure shall be withdrawn from consideration in the council and in all council committees to which the matter has been referred, provided the withdrawal is on the agenda of a council meeting. No vote shall be required. However, if at that meeting, sponsors of the measure do not unanimously agree to withdraw a matter, the matter shall not be withdrawn. At that time, upon request, any counselor shall have their individual sponsorship removed or added." The rules don't address the specific situation. In my opinion, and if the president had asked me at that time, I would have said, if the, if a counselor calls a point of order and states that the motion that is being considered and/or is being voted on is out of order, then the president could have ruled whether the motion to adopt the resolution was in or out of order or to amend the resolution was in or out of order. And the council, if they disagreed with that ruling, could have voted to overturn the president's ruling. Does that make sense? So it is a question that's not clearly defined in the rules, so the council gets to decide. Nobody raised a point of order at that time that the motion that was on the floor was out of order. It was stated that it was out of order or that one counselor thought that it was out of order. But if a counselor raised that as a point of order, the motion that's being voted on is not in order because there's not a sponsor, then the president would have had an opportunity to rule on that point of order. And if there were a counselor who disagreed with that ruling, then a vote could be taken by the council on whether or not the motion on the floor was in order. I know that I'm repeating a lot of the same words again and again, and so that can sound like a spiral, and I apologize for that, but I'm happy to answer questions if that's not clear.
I also want to just point out that we are almost 30 minutes now.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Mandy brought up an instance, who knows whether it was our first year or second year, where I had literally a substitute amendment. And since I wasn't allowed for the whole thing, a whole different list, it threw one out, and I wasn't allowed to give it to any council, anyone in the council before I came. But we, it was substantive enough, one counselor and everyone agreed, we needed 10 minutes to read it. And so it showed up on the screen, everyone had it in their hand. So I think, and I'm talking about not a motion, but actually a substantive piece, so as opposed to the motion. So in this case, if we had had that time, people could have cross-matched things that they had scratched up. So I think, in general, if there's a substantive change in a document that we had received in our material, that we should just have a five-minute, 10-minute, you know, if it's, if it's two paragraphs, it doesn't have to be that long, but people need a chance to read it. You know, so it's just, that would have made enough of a difference so people wouldn't have had to say, well, which word, which words changed? Oh, I like that change, you know? And we, we never had that time, and then finally we got it on the screen. So the one time I did do that, we took a pause. I also think it's very difficult, and I'm, I'm talking, looking forward, if we've got a substantive, this is, I finally had the lawyer say, if I have something substantive and long to say, as long as I speak to it for two minutes or three minutes, then I can submit a written document, which really works when you're not voting on it that night. But I had something on a housing policy, and there was never any time to say everything I need to say in two to three minutes. So our attorney said, if there's something substantive and you summarize it, you can put your document in the record. So this wouldn't apply to what we were dealing with, a resolution, but we do, we did, that's okay, that we're not violating open meeting law by showing, we think something needs significant changes. So I just wanted to hark back because it was, it promoted a, a good discussion. I completely lost that way back when, but it was a good discussion.
Pat?
I'll try to be lean. I want to address an accuracy. No, I can do it. I'm getting help. Old ladies need help. We did not say we would not accept amendments. We also accepted, Jennifer's amendment passed by the group. It was not taken out, as far as I know. What the sponsors, and I'm speaking now for Mandy and Alicia, but they can speak for themselves as well, we could not accept the amendments that Andy was putting forward that included a reference to Hamas. When we were talking, not about Hamas, we were talking about the Palestinian people and what was happening to them since Hamas's dreadful, horrible attack. When I tried to get Palestinian people simply mentioned in the October, I believe it was October 16th resolution, I was voted down. I accepted that. Didn't like it, but I accepted it. It was not possible for me as a sponsor to accept Andy's amendments. That is why I withdrew my name, not because I wasn't willing to accept any amendments. And that's, people need to remember that. They need to remember things a little bit more accurately, sometimes, myself included.
I'm going to go to Bob and then to Counselor Walker.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest that if we're faced with a situation like we were faced with, we just adjourn the meeting and reconvene in 48 hours and reconvene on Zoom so we can have a discussion the way that we should. The one, the one question I wanted to pose to Athena is whether it's possible to cut off someone after two minutes. In other words, we give them two minutes to talk. If they're going beyond two minutes, can we actually cut them off? Or do we have to ask them to stop?
So in the memo that I wrote to the council when this issue first came up at a council committee meeting, my advice was that a chair shouldn't do something on a Zoom meeting that you wouldn't do in person. And if you wouldn't forcibly silence a person in an in-person meeting, then we shouldn't mute a person on Zoom. So my advice has been for the chair or the president to ask that person to wrap up their comments and not to use the mute button as a way to silence people. Did, did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I realize it's difficult to, to stop someone who's in the room. It's easy with technology on Zoom, but that would be unfair to the people on Zoom. So it, it... So it, most people are pretty good about it, but there are some who just keep rambling on, and it just extends the meeting with very little new information for us to deal with, that's all.
And the other thing that I would caution as a chair would be that if you're going to limit one person to two minutes, you just need to be consistent with everyone who speaks and make sure that you're not letting one person go over and not everybody else.
Counselor Walker, you've not spoken to you before.
Thank you. I wasn't going to raise my hand because I was essentially going to say everything that Mandy Jo already said, but I just thought that I might also answer George's question in how he would, how, he wanted to know how colleagues might have wanted that situation to be addressed. And I just also agree that we should have or could have taken a recess. And I think that at our last council meeting, there was an instance where we couldn't be heard or we couldn't hear each other because of the audience, and we took a recess. I think that was extended and extended until we could hear each other, and we got back to deliberation. And I think that that was a similar course that we could have taken at that meeting. And I would hope that that's what we would do, because I would prefer, unless we're taking really long recesses and not getting anywhere, then I think adjourning might be appropriate. But I don't think we should have jumped to adjourning. I think we should start with taking recesses.
There's three counselors that have spoken once. I'd like to go ahead and have an opportunity for you to speak again, and then we're going to end this and move on to the original purpose of this retreat. Jennifer?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify. I, I think when I put in my friendly amendment, it was, had already been stated that the, that I heard that the sponsors, that we could make amendments, because I think Mandy addressed it, this was before Andy had made his amendments. It was just, there was the whole issue of whether amendments would be entertained, and that came up before I had put out my amendment or Andy had, so there was, I, I felt like that we were sort of a little off our game from that moment, because it was, we, whenever something comes before us, we discuss it, we make amendments, but there was a, the discussion started with some caution about not amending the resolution before anybody had made one. And I, I thought that kind of set all of us a bit off our game.
Counselor Ette, I'm going to go to you and then on to the other counselors that have not, that have spoken.
So speaking about the, the meeting that we had or the votes for the resolution, I think, and this discussion we have in this evening, it's important to realize that we have a duty to ourselves as members of the council and also a duty to ourselves as a council, speaking to and with the public. And I think something that we should be emphasizing, I think we've done that tonight, is stress the importance of discussion and deliberation. I think what was lost that night was that we were held captive by the desire to have a decision that night, and that limited our ability to discuss. And so I'll just use this opportunity to speak to the public. There are votes that are made and decisions that we can arrive at, but we can use the proper channels and avenues to get to those decisions. And that usually is going to involve speaking, just like we're doing, and having amendments, friendly or unfriendly, as the case may be. There will be further opportunities where disruptive behavior will occur. But if we can remember that within this space, we have an opportunity to, again, speak among ourselves, and that not just arriving at the right result, but using the right process to get to that result, I think that will save us a lot of the trouble that we had from then up to the present moment. Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah, I'm just going to keep it to one very brief observation and suggestion to think about for the future, but not for discussion tonight. And that is when we deal with complex issues like bylaws and policies, it goes through a committee. And the committee has a fairly complete discussion and really works through what amendments it might think appropriate. And so what may be initially suggested within the referral to a committee by the council or initiated within the committee is, can be changed and fairly significantly changed. We have an odd thing that we've done with resolutions, and that is that it only goes to GOL. GOL has a limited charge of saying, is it clear, consistent, and actionable, which are not clearly defined terms, but certain, but I think that it's understood to not go to the substance of what is there. And so the GOL does not look at and consider whether there are significant changes. And I, this was the first time we've had a resolution, maybe the second, because I think Pat actually raised another one that was a fair point to raise. But is there a time when a resolution really ought to not come directly to the council as a whole, but should start the council committee and let the committee have some of that discussion and make sure that it's fully understood that whatever is getting to the council is going to be a council action, not an action that's recommended by an outside group that initially sponsored or advocated for the resolution, the bylaw, or the policy? So I, I just urge us, in the future time, to think about that question as to whether we ought to be having a committee process that is more rigorous than the one that currently exists of just, is it clear, consistent, and actionable?
Okay. George, final comment?
As you can see, I'm not a First Amendment absolutist. Just because, I think it's a fallacy actually to think, because it's difficult to draw a line, means you can't draw a line. I'm going to raise this with GOL, and if anyone else is interested in the idea of trying to draw a line, be happy to hear from you. But I was intrigued by Mandy's suggestion of Zoom does seem to be a particular challenge. And perhaps we could instruct GOL, if the council so wishes, or GOL can just take it up on its own. Should we look at some of the stricter regulations that some communities have related to Zoom? Would that be helpful?
Thank you. We're going to move on. If anybody needs to take a break, please just get up anytime you want. So the sheets that I sent out to you initially actually developed with input from various people, and frankly, we got distracted and didn't get as much input. What they pointed out for me is this was absolutely not a perfect system. But more importantly, it pointed out to me that our goals are not perfect goals. So what I would like to do is explain the sheet I sent you, not because it's perfect, but just so you understand it. And then we're going to actually go on, and both the town manager and the assistant town manager, with working with staff, have various places where they would like to comment on different goals, and we're going to make sure we have that opportunity. At the end of the evening, I would like us to make sure we agree on some next steps so that we go forward. So the sheet that Athena passed out to you at the beginning of the meeting is similar to what was sent to you, but frankly, it's different. It's different because I had to make a correction because of a snafu in receipt of material. The, the initial, the actual numbers that appear are what were on individual counselors'. Counselor Walker, have you been, this is what was sent to you earlier today.
I just wanted to make sure it's the, the email where you said, take two.
I'm sorry?
The email that was titled?
Second take.
Take two of the ranking.
Take two, thank you. Yes, that is the one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, and I also really want to stress, this is an initial take. This is not final. I know I have things I would change. So the actual numbers are what people put in the matrix, and those were rankings within goals. Okay? And then with a desire to say, well, if you look across the sub-goals, are there sub-goals that you would rank in any order? I think this is the most important sub-goal, okay? Okay. And if you said it was the most important sub-goal and it was one of your top five, then you see a double, or you see an X in the box. If it was one of your second five, you see just one slanted thing in your box. This is not, you know, this is not what I would call, anyway. And then at some point today, somebody suggested that I then take an average, and I did, and basically it didn't change anything. The yellows are based on the numbers only, they are not based on any of the slashes. And the yellows are, except for one place, I think I made a mistake, are for anything that was an average of 2.5 or lower and/or 30, and there's one I made a mistake on. And that is basically within goals and out of goals. Having said that, when we get to certain pages, you'll see that the X's tend to be very consistent with where the highest important rank was. And sometimes it's not. And again, I just want to stress that when we're done with this whole conversation, the goal is to have counselors re-rank based on some guidelines we all agree on. So with that, we're going to start with the climate action goal. And it has five sub-parts, sub-goals. And I think, unless the council would like to ask, okay, let's ask questions. Pam?
Thank you. I never got the impression that I was supposed to prioritize the, the five, six primary goals. Nobody ever said, Pam, is climate, is climate more important than, than community health?
It was to priori-
How would we ever, how would we ever?
I misled you, okay? It was to prioritize the sub-goals within, not the goals, the sub-goals. So you might have said, I believe that using a climate lens is the most important sub-goal, not that climate is the most goal, important goal. Anna?
So Lynn heard my rant about this earlier today, but I will repeat it for the rest of you lucky ducks who didn't get to hear it. My main takeaway from this exercise, and I just wanted to say it on the outset, is that GOL is currently discussing the town manager evaluation process, and it is very, very abundantly clear to me that we also need to examine our expectations around setting goals. As I looked at these and as I went through and prioritized, I would prioritize things that were maybe broad, because I felt they included some of the more specific goals. For example, if we're looking at the front page, taking action on portions of the Climate Action Adaptation and Resilience Plan, that includes supporting development of climate action bylaws. And so I just wanted to note that this is so imperfect, and it's our own doing, because we've created goals that are all over the place in terms of their specificity, in terms of their demand, all of it. So this is a challenging exercise, and I'm hoping that it also will lead to some clarity in the process of creating goals going forward, and GOL has that on our, on our list.
Absolutely. Counselor Hanke?
One question, one comment. The question is, you alluded to maybe the manager having surveyed staff about their potential priorities or thoughts on all of these goals. Is there a document that we will get that has those thoughts so that counselors can see them, or is it just going to be all reported orally? And the second one was, when I was doing these rankings, one of the things I found was it was hard for me to rank things that fell to only sort of within town staff purview, looking at climate action, something like, complete the JPE, because the council no longer has anything to do with that, versus something that would eventually come back to the council. And how do I rank those too? Because I, I want us to be able to act on some stuff that are within these goals, but if I don't rank those high, we'll never be able to act on them unless we're doing them themselves. And the last discussion seems to indicate maybe there's some disagreement as to whether counselors should propose stuff. But, but yet I don't want the other things that don't ever come back to us lost. So that was also a hard thing to score within the rankings.
Yeah. Jennifer?
Yeah, what I also, I feel like some of the rankings don't really, let's say, reflect like where I have a five, doesn't mean it's not a priority. So for example, I, activities that were already in process, like supporting the elementary school building committee and the Jones River Building Committee, I didn't even rank those because those are happening. I mean, clearly, the elementary school is going to happen. And even with CREST, like we just hired a new director, CREST is happening, but like the resident oversight board and reviewing the public safety protocols, I ranked those higher, not because I think they're higher than CREST, but just I want to see those happen and the others are, so.
Yeah. There, you're, each of you is getting many nodding heads because we all confronted the same problems. Kathy?
So if, if, not that anyone wants to stare at the grid to see how many blanks there are, but you'll see that Kathy has lots of blanks, because I decided I would only rank one or two within the categories unless I thought they were all important. And then I found missing things that were in our financial category and were in our things. So for example, bringing in more money from the colleges and universities, you know, trying to, so I had a few that I added when I did my overall ranking that weren't even on the list. You know, so what a, a general comment on this exercise is I think it would be good to do this before we cement next year's goals, because we could winnow down, you know, things that either, you know, no one would think that the elementary school building is low on my priority list, but it's moving right along. So I didn't give it a rank, you know? I didn't feel like I needed to draw it to anyone's attention. So being really careful about what we do, because when you count them up, otherwise they're an amazing number. And then my last comment is, although I sometimes gave it a high, the general, use a climate lens whenever making budget, da-da-da. I like those, but they're hard, they're not particularly actionable, you know? So that is a statement of what we want to do, shouldn't be, you know, so now the only exception I make on that one is what I've seen, the most recent example at JCPC, is this talking about replacing some tiles in town hall with a different kind of tile that doesn't require toxic substances to be cleaned, was brought up as a climate action and sustainability. So someone was thinking in terms of the substances- The substances we use, not just the materials. So in that. Staff is doing that, but some are not as actionable as, you know, specific. So. I think this exercise is a good one for us to do to. Get to a narrower group of where we want to put emphasis on in the coming year.
Thank you. Andy?
Yeah, most of, most of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'm not going to repeat it. But I did have a question and that was, we had two documents we were asked to fill out. The other one was a word document and I don't see that. How that was reflected and what we had feedback on. So I was curious to know.
No, it's reflected in the page. So for example, Andy, in. Climate action. One of your top five was goal one, sub-goal three. Okay? That was one of your top five. So it got an X. Okay. Another one of yours was in your second five. And it got a slant, one slant, and that was using climate lens. It was just a way of trying to put everything on one sheet, which. Is, you know, I'm literally, I. I laid awake at night trying to figure out how to depict this back to people. So. All of your feedback, except the written feedback is here. Okay? And whether it's useful or not, I think the most useful thing at this point is in fact to hear from Paul and David. And Athena, although I, Athena, were you involved in these conversations? I think she's been too busy doing the budget. But Paul and David, why don't we start with the climate? Action goal and. Proceed.
Thank you. So we did go through all these goals. We talked about it with our staff. And what we, I think we came to some of the similar conclusions that you did. Some of them were doing them, they're ongoing. They're, they're not going to, we didn't give them a priority because, you know, looking, using a climate lens to make decisions, we're doing that. And I think what we're hoping is that you'll see that those kinds of actions reflected when we develop our budget and we identify those things in the budget process. The goal from my perspective is that, excuse me, council sets goals. The town manager receives those goals, incorporates them into the staffing plans, but also in the budget. You see the budget, you see, are my goals reflected in the budget? And then those. Come out in the budget and then you evaluate me as to whether those goals have been delivered on. So. How would you like us to move forward? What we, and what we've done is we've sort of put timeframe in our, just a general timeframe. And where we would prioritize them in terms of when things could get done. Because we've learned a lot over the last few couple of years about how long things take and. We realize things take a long time and it's a legislate, especially legislation. And then we're trying, and these are rough things and I think we, this is an iterative process. We really look forward to a conversation. If the council is saying, whoa, this really is something we want you to prioritize, we would then relocate some other work. We want to emphasize that. Our staff have a lot of duties to do in addition to the goals that the council sets. So the councils, you know, we are building buildings, we are reviewing permits for new developments, for new buildings. There's a lot of work that's being done on a regular basis. And we also recognize the importance of the council's goals to achieve things going forward. But I think that we've come to realize is that. The council setting broad goals is crucially important. For instance, when you set a goal since climate action is the first one, as a climate action goal. We have internalized that, as Kathy has mentioned, that people are thinking about that every time we look at products or purchase things or. Come up with ideas on what we want to go to, you know, where we are seeking grants and things like that. But. So I think that setting those big goals and then also saying, we wouldn't, this council wants to accomplish these things this year. Or I would actually think you should go to a two-year goal-setting timeframe, but. That's up to you in terms of how you want to set goals. So.
Oh, could I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible for me to just jump in?
Yes.
I think that was an excellent summary. I think when Paul and I were thinking about this, we were really. Wanted to emphasize that this should be a conversation. We want to hear from you. Obviously some of the rankings help, but there's a lot here. There's in Paul's goals and it can be a little overwhelming, I think. As we look at what can be accomplished between now and the end of this calendar year, and I agree, it should be. Ultimately a two-year process. But I also wanted to, you know, part of my job is to balance workload and workload. I'm only speaking really for conservation and development tonight, but. My area, our functional area touches most other departments in town. So. We work closely with the health department, the recreation department, the DPW, and the list goes on. And it really is that balancing act of, as Paul mentioned. Kind of, at least in CND, the regulatory responsibilities that the planning board, zoning board. DAAC, Conservation Commission, all of those boards and committees have, while at the same time. Working on goals of buildings and parks and the list goes on. You know, I thought about Fort River School and Jones Library and, you know. We are well on our way on both of those projects. But to some degree, the work of, as an example, inspection services is just beginning. They worked very closely with the building committee, the designers, the OPM. On getting, let's take Fort River School, the wonderful event we had this week. But now inspection services takes over from this point forward, raking ground. Moving dirt. Setting foundations, all of that work falls to Rob Mora and his team. While at the same time, we're hoping to launch. Rental registration, which has been in process for eighteen months. So. That's the kind of balancing act. I think that's a really, a real example for me and the staff that does such wonderful work in CND is. Yes, we have a wonderful new school in process, but for inspection services. Their sleeves are rolling up and wow, twenty-four, twenty-five and beyond is going to be a lot of work. While at the same time, we hope to launch if the council moves forward on rental registration. So just, that's a really tangible example for us. So. Thank you. Looking forward to the conversation tonight and beyond. It'll, this is just the start, I think.
So we're going to start with climate and just go down those initial. Thank you.
So yes, and what was really informative, I think it's actually yours, your exercise that you've done. I haven't really. Memorized all the priorities, but, but I think it was really useful to sort of help us frame this a little bit. So. And when, when I call something ongoing, I just sort of, I'm not going to really address it. It's ongoing. Like the first one is use climate lens. I think it's ongoing. It's a, it's what we're doing. The second one is the joint powers entity. I think we have reported that that's on hold and that's a low prior, very low priority because. They're taking a different tack with the CCA and that, that is moving forward, but this particular goal is not one that will be a priority for the town staff. The third one is, you have two, and I was a little confused about how you ranked them because there was the waste hauler bylaw and the solar bylaw. And I'm not sure how, am I actually very curious how the counselors? You know, if you prioritize this, did you mean both? Did you mean one or the other? Because this is important to us. And I think that that's, this is probably a crucial one for you to discuss in terms of where your priority is. When we've looked at this, for waste hauler, we think that that's about a twelve-month process. A, the, to get something up and ready. A proposal to the council, and I think what we would look to is get something, if there's going to be a new waste hauler bylaw. We'd be optimistic about getting something prepared for a, the budget discussion in FY twenty-six. For the solar, it's already been in process for twelve months, Dave?
Eighteen, eighteen months.
But I think there's a long, knowing what we've gone through with rental registration. This is just now coming to the council. You're talking about a fairly substantial conversation about what this is going to look like. So I think we would say. You know, if the council is ready to initiate on this, I think the staff are prepared. I don't think the council, the staff are necessarily prioritizing this as something that's urgent. And Dave can talk to this a little bit more if he'd like.
I can jump in on that. We had a very. Good conversation, I think, last night at CRC, a couple hour conversation on this. I think Paul's category, you know, the way he characterized it is. Staff do not see this as urgent, but at the same time, staff and, and the working group have invested eighteen months. In moving this forward. I think it was a very fruitful conversation last night about. Trying to tease apart, what is bylaw, what is regulation? And I think that's what CRC identified. That was a big takeaway for all of us, I think, last night from CRC. And I think once that is done, we'll have a better idea of. How long might this take to move those parts? Through the CRC and hopefully make a recommendation to the council. So. I think there's a commitment from staff. I know there's a commitment. At some level from the council. I think what I heard last night from council members, representatives on the CRC was you wanted to have a. Or it might be helpful to have a conversation this evening about how high a priority that is. So I would. Differ to all of you as to how high a priority is that and then staff can take that back. And I think last night I also talked about. Pacing ourselves on that. So I would. Refer to the chair of CRC or other members of CRC to. Fill us in on where you think that is in priorities.
I'll address the next, the last two in this section. So the ensure the town can fully utilize state and federal funds targeted at sustainability initiatives. We see that as something that we're doing on a regular basis, but if we're misunderstanding that, we'd like to hear from the council. You know, the counselors who really felt this was important. We just feel like that's a get, yes, we're always doing that, we're looking for funds, but if there's something that someone says, no, here's what I really had in mind for you to do. We'd like to know that. And then the last one is to take action on the portions of the, of the CARP that have been prioritized. And I think that that's again, something that's on our, what that says to me is that we could give you an update on all, where we are on the CARP. And I think that might be an important conversation or to report to you on what we have prioritized, what's working on that.
Okay. So let's pause here for a moment. Is there anybody who wants to discuss one or two? Kathy? One or two? Sub-goals, one or two? Okay. Then let's go on to three. Where I also tell you, I wanted to split this in half. Andy?
Just in general terms, the. Way that I was ranking the highest may have not been what everybody else was doing, but I was looking at it from. What is the highest priority for the council? Recognizing that staff are working on these goals, but they have, may have different. Sense of what are the highest priorities and they're working on things where they have the opportunity to get success. I'm looking for what is involved for the council and development of bylaws. Therefore ranked extremely high because there are bylaws that have been discussed, there have been. A lot of time has been spent on them and bringing those bylaws to conclusion becomes therefore. In my mind, a high priority for the council.
So I'm speaking in my role as a counselor. Thank you. First of all, I am going to speak to the solar bylaw and I understand there was quite a conversation at CRC last night. I look forward to hearing more about that, although I've heard from some people today. To me, the issue of the solar bylaw goes back to. Its origination and the fact that we have had a group work on it, whether it's regulation or not. I also reflect on the fact that the chair of the ZBA suggested we needed this. But more importantly. We need something where we can stand up to the state and say, we control our own land. That does not mean we don't support solar. It just means. I personally and many people I know in Amherst do not want the state coming in and saying. Thou shalt do this to your land. It's our land. It's not. I, 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 we have discussed this with our legislators and it is an ongoing issue. And while I totally support. The establishment of solar, I want to do in a way that protects our land and the safety of our residents. Counselor Walker?
Thank you, Lynn. I'm just having. Bit of a hard time with this conversation because I'm trying to understand. What our goal is here, because I know, like I prioritize, I submitted my priorities for. Our goals, but these are already all of our goals. So like. Are we trying to change what our goals are as a council? Were we just trying to determine what our priorities are? But does that change anything because they're all still generally our goals? So are we saying these goals are more important than these goals? Is that like a definitive determination we're making it, making right now? Because I thought that. The, the ranking was just for purposes of the conversation we'd be having tonight. But if we're not using the rankings for our conversation, I'm just trying to understand, like, what are we trying to get out of this conversation?
What we're trying to get out of this conversation is the prioritization of our sub-goals. Within our goals. So it's not to say climate action is more important than this, but within climate action. Where do we see things importantly?
But when we are doing like the town manager evaluation, and I know Anna said like we're relooking at that process, but typically. We go through each one of these things and make notes as to like what progress we think we've made throughout the year on each goal. So does prioritizing these goals help us at all? Or are we just trying to tell the town manager, we hope you do these things first?
It was a discussion that was back and forth between. What goals are most important over, say, a two-year period? And what can we reasonably expect to happen? And that's one of the reasons why, for instance. Paul and Dave have already said, the development of a. Waste hauler bylaw is probably a twelve-month process. And the first time we would see anything in the budget would be FY twenty-six, a year from now. So it's an iterative process. Like if this is a goal, let's make sure we understand. When we can accomplish it and what it's going to take to accomplish it. And later on, we may hear some additional things that. You know, are clearly around, what do we need in the way of money to accomplish that? So it's, it's really an opportunity to go back and forth and understand. What's behind each of the goals and therefore what is our priority? Does that help, Alicia?
Slightly, but is it okay if I just have a follow-up? Because the way I'm looking at it, even if we say that that's a twelve-month pro- process to see it in the budget. There are still steps that should be taken during those twelve months to get to the point of us seeing it in the budget. So would we not still be looking at, are we taking the necessary steps to be able to see this in twelve months? And that's how we measure this goal, but that doesn't really change. The priority level of the goal. It just changes. How we measure the progress of the goal.
It, it does. And so for example, when the town manager then submits his self-evaluation. If in this conversation, we've already understood. That the most progress we can hope to make on waste hauler is X, then that's what we should expect to see. Not, in other words, it's not going to all get completed by the time we do his, he does his self-evaluation. This fall. It gives us a sense of timing as well as expectations. And in some instances, I think you're going to hear the question, what does success look like in this? What? What do, how would we measure this? So a lot of this is not as cut and dry as we would like it. And I think all of us felt that when we were trying to. Fill this in.
Sorry, just one last thing. And so I think that, because I also had the same experience of like really having a hard time rating them because a lot of them were overlapping. And some things I think are equally as important, so that was really hard. But I think that this conversation for me at least is leaning more towards. Like this is a conversation we should have had before we determined what our goals were. And so again, like a process thing, like we should have done this a little bit earlier because now even if we say. Only this can happen, we can't change what the goal is. So this is the goal as it's going to read.
I, that's why I believe someone in the beginning said, it would be good to do this. it would be good to do this before we finalize our goals. Kathy, I credit you with that.
Yeah, so I'll say it again, absolutely, Alicia, it would be good to do it first. I mean, this is a good one to focus on because way back when, when I saw the goals, I said, I haven't seen waste hauler. I don't know how strong I want to push it because I want to know whether it costs the town a lot of money to do it, whether it's going to toss the taxpayers more, and do we have the staff to do it? So I had a question mark. And to make it a town manager goal, I thought before we'd had it spinning subcommittee. So I know there's been a lot of work on it, but I haven't seen it because I'm not on that committee. So, so that was my, and on solar, we had a lot of discussion on this. And this would move to a bylaw, so I feel differently about the two of these. But I left it blank because I didn't know how to rank something. Where, one of them I had questioned from the very beginning, that if we haven't decided to do it, we shouldn't tell the town manager it's a top priority. So I wanted the decision to have a 13-person discussion about it first. So this one has two parts to it. Where on solar, we had a pretty robust discussion on what we hoped to get out of the committee. And I haven't, I know I should have seen what came back, but I haven't paid attention to it. So I'm ready, so it's, it's a good one. And I think, Alicia, you're right, this is an exercise we should be doing first, rather than saying, we gave you these goals, but it's a two-year goal or it's a three-year goal. It's not as important as A, B, or C.
Okay. Counselor Hanke?
So I ranked this one low. I agree with Kathy on waste hauler. I'm not sure we should be having staff spend a lot of time on something we don't know whether we'd adopt. Or haven't had a good conversation of if this costs more money, are we still going forward with it? You know, that, that doesn't mean we're not necessarily for looking at things, but, but I think we're missing parts of that conversation. For solar, I look at who needs to do the work on the staff, and that is our planning department. And frankly, I just have higher priorities in different areas for planning department than the solar bylaw, especially when the planning department says they don't think this is a priority compared to other things. So that's one of, not compared to other things, but, but they said that our current bylaw could potentially manage this. I would like to see our planning department focus on measures related to economic development and housing before solar, especially having seen the draft solar bylaw and believe that it has a lot of issues. Solar bylaws are still in major upheaval across the state. But there's also the other potential bylaws. We're only focused on two. But there might be other bylaws out there that would better focus climate action than these two that we're not even having a discussion on or asking staff about or giving them their own thoughts about what that is. And then the other thing I wanted to push back on is I actually want to just put out there that I disagree with Lynn regarding her advocacy to the state about, I think her quote was, we can, we control our own land. I disagree with that. This is where we're seeing the solar bylaws butt heads with 48, Chapter 48, Section 3 of not regulating. And if every town is left to their own, saying we support having solar and moving to non-fossil fuels, but letting every town regulate no large scale, we're not going to move there. I, just like with housing and affordable housing, and we say it's a regional issue, solar is also a regional issue. So I just needed to put that out there so it didn't stand alone.
Jennifer?
Yes, so as one of the, I guess now we're three, one of the three council sponsors of the waste hauler bylaw, we, I would, that was voted out of, the council referred that to TSO. There are many community members for whom it's a high priority. Tomorrow on the TSO agenda, after many months, we are seeing a report, a request for information went out last summer. And for information on pricing and services, that will be, that was received in October. And then TSO will see the report for the first time tomorrow. So it is moving along, but we, we can't, the, starting with the information we'll, we'll see tomorrow, we'll begin to have some idea of what the services that we can obtain are that are out there. And just, you know, and some more information on pricing. At an MMA session in January, we, there was a session on towns contracting themselves for waste hauler services. And they said absolutely, when you, the fee structure, the pay as you throw fee structure in town after town, they have seen that that very much reduces, it's, it's a very good waste reduction strategy. And that that is something that's, you know, important among our climate action goals. So I hope we can continue to move forward with the waste hauler. And, you know, I just, we totally, I think the sponsors understand that this will take time. But I hope that we can continue to move forward with it.
Pam?
Oh, thank you. I wanted to speak to the solar, which is the other half of, of number three. In our meeting, the staff did not say that solar is not a priority. They, she said that it was not urgent because there were no proposals coming in that they were aware of beyond what was already in hand. And that it takes quite a while to get organized so that we would be aware of new projects coming in. I think what Lynn was referring to for the state is that they are making an effort to collect information and propose streamlining processes for solar regulation and permitting. And that there would be something like, you know, sort of the state EPA would manage or DEP, Department of Environmental Protection, might manage some process of that sort. And I would concur with Lynn that I think it's important for us to get our ducks in a row and to understand what is of, of key interest to Amherst in terms of a balance between the solar and the working lands or the working forests in a way that kind of gives us a win-win. So I don't, I don't want to cut off that conversation. And I would put it, in fact, it was my, it was my number one priority. So I'd love to see that conversation going forward.
Andy?
Yeah, I'm going to start with waste hauler, but it's really what I'm going to say is going to have a broader cover than that. Waste hauler is something that we've had as a discussion in this town for a long time, going back to before this form of government, when there was a refuse and recycling management committee that developed a long-term strategic plan. And what the bylaw is doing, and it's sort of, that committee has morphed into an independent organization, Zero Waste Amherst, but it is the same set of priorities. And it is the same set of priorities that was very clearly stated at that MMA conference session, which was gratifying because it really did put flesh on the bow, on, on the bones of what it is that are the reasons that you would have a plan like that. And it is also consistent with the state, which has its own plan. And so that the state is mandate, is going to be mandating that communities move in this direction. So there, there are lots of reasons to do it. But ultimately, for that bylaw and any other bylaw, we have to look at what is feasible, what our goals are, what is feasible. And then when we develop a plan, we have to step back and make a decision as to whether it can be implemented, whether, what are the economics of the costs and benefits of implementing the plan? So whether it be rental registration or be waste hauler, we can't make that judgment until we have developed the bylaw to at least as far enough along that we can assess what are the benefits and what are the costs? Because that's ultimately what the council's judgment ought to be.
Pat?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this lean. The solar bylaw is a critical piece of legislation. It may not be urgent because we've had a group of people working on it for over a year. There was work on it done before that and offered to both the planning board and the ZBA via the moratorium. So that's something that we've been working on for quite a while. The other thing is that the projects that are in the works, there are real critical issues going on with them. Pure Sky and the forested land off Shoots Berry Road and other forested land here, that could very much affect water because all of those households are on wells. So we really need to think about what we're doing and how we're letting, you know, what our guidelines and boundaries are. The other thing, the Hickory Ridge project, they've included battery storage. That's a project, that, this one actually does feel urgent to me, which makes this project, whole thing urgent. That, there, there's consistent flooding on that site now, and I said this in the meeting. There, it limits access. Water has damaged battery storage units and caused fires. That, that literally, the leakage has caused the chemical action so that they explode and burn. And with the flooding at Hickory Ridge, it would be almost impossible to get emergency vehicles there. So it is, there's a level of urgency, but there's also, we can take good steps because we do have to keep aware of what the Attorney General's office is allowing because they're making shifts. And also the shifts that the state have made around preserving forests and the, the really, the need for that for, because of the sequestration thing. So we need to keep working on it, pulling it apart, regs and bylaw, great idea, needs to happen. There are a lot of good things in the bylaw pieces. So I don't think it's going to be this overwhelming, incredible project that is going to take so much staff time. CRC is going to need to come up with an understanding of the issues. And, and we really need to pay attention, and I'm saying this for myself, to people who have differing opinions because I would like us to find a really collaborative solution to this. But the health, safety, and welfare of many of our residents is at stake with just two potential projects right now in town. And there are other things we can look at to do solar. Enough said, that wasn't lean, sorry.
Jennifer?
Yeah, just quickly, um, no, I just hope that I'm getting concerned that, you know, that we'll have patience with each other and the process because I feel it's a little like, well, waste hauler's been kind of, you know, there for over a year, so do we still want to keep it a priority? But since there are many of these, take a long time to go from being referred to a committee to actually being a bylaw, that I hope we can be patient. And part of the reason they take time is we understand staff and committees have many things going, priorities competing, or not competing, but happening that have to happen at the same time. So I hope we can just be patient. And even if things seem to be moving along slowly, that we won't say, oh, you know, we're going to bump it off, we have another priority. And then all the time that's been put into it, you know, for a year, 18 months, was for naught.
So the next one, as the town manager said, is kind of ongoing. And, you know, whenever we find funds, we actually do a very good job of going after them in Amherst. And then the other one is the climate action, and we provide regular updates. So I just want to pause for a moment before, I'm sorry, Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Paul whether he has the resources to go after every potential federal, state and federal funds? Because if he doesn't have the resources, then we can't do that, we can't meet that goal.
Paul?
We, we could always use more resources. The, you know, we have a, are using ARPA funds, we have a capital projects manager who's been working on the school and the library, among other projects as well. He's, he has educated himself about a lot of the resources out there, especially IRA. His tenure with the town, well, we're, we're going to keep trying to keep him engaged on different projects. So we probably would have to engage some consultants to help us with some of this stuff. And I think there are people out there who are developing expertise in this, including consulting firms, but also legal firms as well. So we probably have to add, allocate some funds to really set us up in the right direction, especially for the bigger projects.
Anna?
What Paul just said is exactly why this was one of my higher-ranked goals. We need to, the town manager goals feed into the budget guideline, everything feeds each other, right? This is a big ecosystem of what we're going to try to hopefully get done. And for me, this, this question is a matter of, do we have the resources? Are we allocating the resources necessary in order to be able to pursue these things? And for the town manager, that resource might be staff time, it includes staff time. And then the council is saying, in putting something like this in the town manager goals, that we are going to also back it up in our budget guidelines and that we want to see it in the budget, that someone like our capital projects manager is able to do this exact thing as part of his role. So this is one where there, it's a really vague and opaque goal on paper. And it's one where I go back and forth because I don't know that the council is in, Athena and I have had many conversations about this, that, because I struggle with, with where the council is overstepping in putting some of these goals on paper and where we're not. And so keeping this vague, we still need a way to communicate what this means to us without necessarily assigning it to be done in one specific way. But yeah, the least lean comment, sorry. I, I went rogue.
And there's, there's another side to going after money. And that is, once you get it, you need to be able to manage it. And I've heard from time to time that not only is it tough to put the staff on writing the proposals, but then when you get them, you know, you have somebody committed 150% FTE. And I'm going to, excuse me, we don't have 150% FTE for that. So full-time equivalent, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use acronyms like that.
Could I jump in for a second, Lynn? So, no, I think this is a very interesting conversation. To Paul's point, sure, you know, could we use more staff to, to, to chase grants and chase funding and administer that funding and carry out, project manage? Absolutely, I, I think, who would turn that down? But I do want to kind of dispel the myth from time to time. I do hear at certain meetings that, you know, someone says, well, why didn't we go after grant X or grant Y? And I will tell you, we have a very, our staff is very aggressive about going after funding. We have literally some millions of dollars in the pipeline right now, not even withstanding ARPA money and CPA money. And so to Lynn's last point about, we then need to manage that money, manage those projects, manage those contracts, those are all things we do. It's great to get the grant, it's great to get the, the check in Boston or wherever we get it here in town, but how do we manage the projects once we get it? So we go after every dollar we think makes sense. We do, after serious discussions, sometimes pass on some things for very good reasons. This week alone, I've had some interesting conversations with community members about municipal vulnerability program dollars. And in fact, the town has gotten a couple of MVP grants in the last few years. But there's a couple of projects that we floated with the state, and the state said they just didn't think those were fundable. So we made the decision not to invest hours and hours of staff time to write those grants. It doesn't make everyone happy, and sometimes people question, why did we do that? But that's the reality. But we're, you know, North Hampton and Amherst, we kind of, you know, kind of bounce off each other, challenge each other. I mean, we get a lot of funding on this side of the river, North Hampton does as well. But I just want to say, we go after the But I just want to say, we go after the funding in all departments. So there are times when I have conversations with our superintendent of public works and we, you know, Guilford might say, are you going for that, Dave? Or are you folks going to go? Let's team up. Let's put our, our staff together. Jason Skeels and Stephanie Chicorello and Aaron Jock and Nate Malloy and say, let's go for that money. So we, we are aggressive about going for funding at the state and federal level in all categories. Housing, you know, mass works, et cetera. So, but there is a limit to how much we can manage once it gets here.
Then to any comments at this point on number five, take action on the portions of this climate action carp. So let me just pause for a moment. I want to make sure that we are not here till midnight. I'm not going to be here till midnight. I don't know about the rest of you. Anna's already told me she's walking out at 10:00. So I'd like to use that as a goal. But when you look at our discussion here tonight, number one, we've said is kind of ongoing. Should we spend time ranking that or not? I'm not asking you to answer the question right now. Number two, looks at this point like it's a no-go. It's, we're not going this way. Somebody else is not going this way. Number three, on the other hand, we feel like we need to split into two or three parts. Number four, there's a nuance with it that isn't actually in the statement. And that's the issue of staffing to go for it and staffing to make it happen once you get the money. And then on number five, it's, you know, a, some people spent enormous amounts of time putting together a huge and very important climate action adaptation and resilience plan for Amherst. Not unlike comprehensive housing. And it's a guidebook. How do we rank that? We certainly don't want to lose it. I'm just throwing this out so that as we think about how we rank goals down the road and how we think about how we write goals down the road. Like maybe it's, we do this goal by doing this. Or in addition to this goal, this is some of the ways in which we could get there. Just before we, with that, let's move on to community health and safety. Yeah. Pam?
Can you, can you give us just like a real quick summary of what we do with the information that we just talked about? Do we give it our own personal rankings of the very most top priority on this sheet? And somehow we're going to relay that to you later? Or do we just keep talking till 10 o'clock?
No, I assume we're going to have another round of some kind of input. I'm trying to visualize what that looks like and I know other people are too. But it will not be done by the time we finish tonight. Okay?
That's a very good time. Thank you. Yeah. I just didn't know what the end result was trying to be. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. All right. Community health and safety, there's five. Any comments before we ask the town manager and assistant town manager to discuss? See none? Go ahead.
Thank you. So first one is facilitate the implementation of the residential rental bylaw. That one, we're prepared to move forward on. We have laid out what it would take to implement. We know it would take probably six to nine months to actually implement with the expectation that we could have something in place with staff hired by the end of the calendar year with the first inspections likely to happen in January of 2025. It doesn't have to, the implementation does not have to be tied to a fiscal year as long as funds are in place. So once the council acts on this, then we know what, I think we've shared previously with you what the implementation would look like.
And just to pause for a moment, this will be on the agenda for the first reading on April 1st. And the second reading and vote, if it all goes as it might, is April 8th. And that gives the manager time to make sure that it's in the budget. Okay?
Uh, the second one is the continue the implementation and assessment of the community's responders, the CREST program, the CREST department. So I think there's two pieces to that. We're continuing, it's a multi-year effort to get the CREST department up and running. We're making good progress. As you know, the new director will start on April 8th. The implement, the assessment is the piece that we're also working on. And there's been some work done by the interim leadership team, but we sort of hit a slowdown on that. But that's an important piece of it. But I just want to communicate to you that this is a long-term investment by the town that we continue to invest in to get it up and running. It's not, you're not going to know in three years whether it's working or not. It's going to take multiple years to develop a new department. I think we have the same kind of situation with the resident inspection services with the residential bylaw. It's going to take time to build it up and to establish it in the, in the, in the community. But we're committed to that and that's being funded. The third is the proposed to the town council plan for the creation of the resident oversight board. This is something that is a priority for the DEI. We've have a, so, so it's in progress, process. The RFP was issued and for a consultant to do the next phase of development of the, of the resident oversight board. Those are due on April 9th. We think that the DI director feels like it's the new, the board would, could be operational early in fiscal, in, in, early in fiscal 25. It'll take about 120 days to move it towards where it needs to go. So, um, so I think that's a this calendar year thing. Resources are available. It's just going through the processes now. So I think that's a, that's been a priority for the council and for the town. So that's, that's in place. The third one is undertake a review of the public safety protocols consistent with the council's November 14, 2022 vote. That's looking at police policies. And that's something we've consistently told you, we will wait till the new chief is hired. So I think that that's, will be one of the first, a top priority for the two new chief when he, we have two finalists. So they're both him men. So it's, it's when he, when he gets appointed. Develop program for, for youth empowerment. So this is one where we have a set aside ARPA funds. And we've had recreation department working on different programs. And I can get a more thorough update on that. It's something that they, um, are working on and continue to develop and offering new programs, in fact. Anything you want to add on any of those, Dave? It takes a minute.
Perhaps I'll wait till the questions, if there are any on that.
Sure.
Okay. Questions and comments? I do have one. And that is, I assume there's some action that the council will have to take to form the resident oversight board. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's not unlike, for instance, when we approved the board of licensed commissioners. Okay?
Well, you didn't approve the board of licensed commissioners. That was in the charter.
That was charter.
But we would, we would come to you with a, I don't know if it's going to be, assuming it's a bylaw. I think we're going to have to have some teeth in it. So, yeah.
Okay. Counselor Walker?
Um, I was just also wondering, you said it will take 120 days for the resident oversight board, which just sounds really specific. So I was hoping you might elaborate more on why or where that comes, where is that, that is coming from?
Yeah. So, so some people talk in months and that's what we've been saying before. This, the information I received was, I think that really is meaning four months. I guess I said four months more likely. So that's, some people put it in 60 to 121 day, 120 days versus, you know, two to four months. That's the only reason I put it in days. It's not that specific. I shouldn't have made it that specific.
But the feedback you got on that came from the DEI department?
Yeah. Yes.
Decided to answer your question, Alicia?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was like a specific mandate that we had to wait this amount of time for some certain reason. So that was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Yeah, Paul, on resident oversight board and maybe youth empowerment. On the first, I've never quite understood whether there's a staff implication in terms of staff hours, if we have one of those. And I think it would be really good if the council itself knew that requires more staffing. You know, but when we're saying we like the idea. On programming for youth empowerment, a similar question, you know, on is the money for running programs? Is the money for physical location? When does it run out? And I don't need answers for this right now, but I think is what Dave's point about juggling people's time? That if the same people are doing multiple things that we have on a priority list or we need more people on climate, I didn't speak up because Bob already said what I'd said, that I, I know how much time the person we have paid by ARPA money is figuring out how to get the federal money for, for our solar installations. So, and sometimes we have to invest in staff to get money. But sometimes if we do a program, it requires more staff. And I know the rental registration, we've, we've seen staff numbers for that. And we're trying to figure out if the revenue would cover the staffs. So in this whole bucket of things, CREST, we have staff. But I'd like some sense from you, not right now, on the staffing implications.
Sure. And I think those are good questions. I'm referencing the resident oversight board. We have ARPA funds dedicated to the development and establishment of it. There will be ongoing costs in terms of stipends for the members of the resident oversight board. Right now, we anticipate that existing staff can support the resident oversight board. But if we get a lot of action, then it might become something different. But I can put together what our projected cost might look like over time.
Are there any other questions or comments on this one before we go to the next? Okay. The next one's economic vitality. There's four sub-goals. Any questions before we move to the discussion with the, with the town manager, assistant town manager? Not, go ahead.
So this, the first one is work closely with local institutions and businesses entities, business entities to promote diverse neighborhoods, affordable housing, new growth in downtown and village centers. So this, this is a broadly stated goal. And we are looking at this in many different ways on how to meet it. Many of the things are things that we're already doing. So if I were to report to you on this goal today, I would say, here's what we're doing. If the, one of the questions for you, the council is that if you had something in mind specifically that you would like to see happen, that would, what the success look like? The answer to what, what the success look like question, that would be helpful for us tonight. Review and revise town regulations to reduce barriers to operating a business in, in Amherst. I think this is one, there's a couple of different responses to this. But I think the primary one is that this is something we would be looking at, working on during the summer with dedicating some of our economic development ARPA funds to bringing in someone to help us evaluate our processes. So I think we would look at this as a summer type of project. Propose revisions to the zoning bylaws to increase and support economic development throughout the town. Dave can speak to the work that's being done at the planning department on some of these things. And in terms of how long things are going to take or when we can start them, we can be more specific if you want to talk about that. And then revise, review and revise policies to support increased year-round population in town. I don't really know what I would, what, what that looks like to you in terms of what does that, what, what would be something that you would expect? Here's what, here's what I want you, here's what I would expect you to show on, on my town manager report on that this has been accomplished.
I'm going to ask.
Can I ask Dave if he wants?
Please, David, go ahead.
Yeah, sure. I, I can elaborate a little bit on, on kind of one through, one through four or so. And a lot of these, you know, touch on other, other topics, you know, like housing and ma- major capital projects. But, you know, under number one, just thinking about the, the range and, and kind of diverse number of projects that, that our staff are working on with private developers in our village centers, right in downtown. Some of you know, some of these projects, they're, they're beginning to, to make their way through the permitting processes. Here, we've heard quite a bit about South Pleasant Street and the Hastings Block. Some of the ideas that are percolating there through local development, expanding housing stock, et cetera. Amity Street and U Drive. We have local developers looking at some very creative options for down in that region of town. Also, the planning board really focused for, for the last number of months on an overlay district there with a focus on increased density for housing and also residential, broadening our residential numbers. Also, we're, our staff is looking at the East Village. We have a new wonderful school going in, in the East Village. Wayfinders, as you know, will be coming before regulatory boards this summer and fall with a 78-unit proposal that we are partnering with them on at the East Street School in Belchertown Road. We're working with other developers down in the East Village to really look at redevelopment. So there's a number of those kinds of initiatives that are going on. In terms of Paul mentioned, you know, focusing on our kind of reviewing and revising our town regulations. I guess the emphasis I would put there is that there's regulations and there's, there's our processes that staff work with developers, work with homeowners, work with folks coming through processes for new restaurants, for instance, things like that. But then there's also constant work on, you know, some of the things we talked about with zoning. So how difficult is it and how long does it take to get through a regulatory process here in town? So those are kind of ongoing things that we're always looking at. Let's see, zoning bylaws, I would just highlight a couple, obviously the University Drive, the housing and economic development overlay. We're also looking at East Village. And then we're also looking at temporary use. I know the board in, you know, during COVID, coming out of COVID, really looked creatively at kind of temporary use. What, what could happen downtown with, with business X wanting to use a parking lot for food trucks? Or, or a farm wanting to do value-added activities like weddings, like teaming up with a micro brewery to have something like that. All of those things can, can broaden opportunities for all, all types of businesses in town. So I know that our building commissioner, our planning director and staff are looking at those. I think I'll stop there for now.
Kathy, you have your hand up?
I just want to thank Dave for what he just went through because I thought one of the things when you, I think when you look at this list and then you look at the next list, wherever housing comes in, they interrelate and they overlap a lot. So he just went through a long list of impressive housing developments that are happening that is quite diverse. And I, I do think the effort on University Drive is very interesting, you know, to, to look at a particular place. So I, I just think we have, we have to echo something I said even when I was reviewing these. We have to be more careful when we write these subcategories because if, if they're sort of saying the same thing with different words, we should just avoid that. You know, if they're really distinctive, that if we have something specific in mind, then we should be more specific. But number one alone is a very nice, broad, get stuff going wherever you can. This is vitality, but it, it also talks about housing and housing is in the next one. So, so, so my overall ranking was trying to pick something on what, where I thought housing had the best chance.
Jennifer?
Yeah, well, I, I guess I maybe Paul or asked in terms of, yeah, I'm sorry. In terms of number four, review and revise policies to support increased year-round population in town. I mean, I sometimes think of that as like using a, a climate lens is under climate action goals. You know, that that's kind of a general lens, our policies or bylaws helping to support that or work against it. And I mean, what comes to mind is And I mean, what comes to mind is if we adopt the nuisance bylaw, that would be one way of supporting that. Even the University Drive Overlay District could if it takes less, you know, pressure off some of the single-family houses converting to rentals for students and could be rentals for, you know, non-student households. I was gonna say, I also think ways that if we support, you know, certainly build, you know, the projects with Wayfair, East Street School, Belcher Town Road, Ball Lane, that's all helping to sustain and expand our year-round population. And even, I guess, supporting the Amherst Community Land Trust. I mean, one that comes to mind to be really specific, McClellan Street in District Four. That is mostly rental houses for students between Kendrick Park and Bestin Street, but from Bestin to Lincoln, it's been a, you know, 250-year-old, 200-year-old residential neighborhood. And a house went up for sale, a small house on a large lot. And it, I immediately, when it went up for sale, contacted the Amherst Community Land Trust. And they very quickly, the house, the open house was on a Saturday. They said they were accepting bids until that Wednesday at the end of the day. So they were, you know, clearly looking for a developer to purchase it. The land trusts tried to get financing together. They actually put in a bid and they were hoping to, you know, I think their long-term goal was to work with Habitat for Humanity to build two houses for year-round households. But they had contingencies on the offer and it went to a developer who made an all-cash offer. And it was actually about $350,000. So that's under the median price that housing, I mean, it would have been perfect for the land trust, but it's hard to compete with an all-cash offer. So I think anything we can do to try and help a land trust or help, you know, to have retained that property and then a house two doors down is now going. The people want to move out and convert it to a rental in part because of what they expect is going to happen next door. So that's, I'm, I didn't mean to digress and go into that detail. But I mean, anything we can do to try and help like a land trust or to be able to develop housing for our long-term population.
Lynn, could I just add three other quick things? Again, these kind of cross categories, but just to mention to the, to the council, you know, I think Paul has mentioned that we're very interested, we're committed with the university, with some of our local development partners to submit a MassWorks grant for Amity Street. And this is more than, our goal is for more than a roundabout. Roundabout is wonderful, it will move, it will move cars, it will safely bring pedestrians and cyclists to the university, to University Drive businesses. But we also want to go south on University Drive to see what else a MassWorks grant can unlock. So it's more than, this is part of the planning board's vision for unlocking some development in an appropriate place, which I think many of us believe is University Drive. Other things we're doing, you know, working, you know, DPW has an initiative right now with some funding through CPA to look at the War Memorial area of War Memorial Pool. So we're talking about building community, building neighborhood vitality. So we're looking at how do we redo the bathhouse and the surrounding area around War Memorial Pool to make that a vibrant, active space for children, families, just like Kendrick Park? How many of us, seven, eight, nine years ago, when that visioning process was going on, would say, well, a playground in Kendrick Park, what's that gonna do? It has activated a space that really was quite quiet and not very useful in many ways. So things like that. I also forgot to mention one initiative that the planning department has already launched, which is looking at the downtown design and streetscape guidelines. And this is, we've heard from the community, we've heard from the council, that that is a high priority. And so we have a consultant on board and the public process for that effort will be launched very shortly. So that's ongoing, that's gonna take many months to do. I presume many of you will be involved in that effort. So how do we get more clarity about what we would like to see in downtown businesses, in our façades, in our streetscapes, et cetera, downtown? So I could keep going, there's a long list, but I just want to give you a quick smattering of what we're working on.
Mandy Jo.
I'm gonna veer from what I was gonna say for a little bit because of what Dave just said. For War Memorial, I encourage teen use. There's a playground for pre-teens, children, a block away, a block and a half away at Kendrick. So I would really want the departments and all the planning to make sure there is stuff for teens to do at War Memorial, play-wise, hanging-out-wise, skate park, what, fine stuff. It's right next to the schools and all, it would be a perfect place for teen uses. But that's not what I wanted to concentrate. What struck me in this one is item number two, sub-goal, review and revise town regulations to reduce barriers to operating businesses in Amherst. Four, five, six, eight of 13 counselors put it in their top 10 sub-goal overall list. And I think that is extremely important. There are only five sub-goals that more than a majority or more counselors put in their top 10. And this is one of them. Three of them all relate to the fire in DPW. That should tell you something when we get there. But so there's only two others and this is one of them. And so I think we cannot ignore the fact that this council wants to see the regulations and the barriers to actually opening businesses and operating businesses substantially reduced. Whether that's how much time it takes to permit, whether that's bylaws that reduce what the permitting requirements are, whatever it is, we want to see it. And I think this shows that's where some of the department's staff time needs to be spent.
Bob?
Yeah, I want to echo that sentiment. The reason I put down number two as number one in the top 10 is I've spoken to a couple of people who have a business in Amherst and a business in Northampton. And they said, started getting started in Amherst was like pulling teeth. Getting started in Northampton was simple. So we're doing something wrong and we need to figure out what we're doing wrong that's, you know, discouraging people from opening up businesses. It's more, I think, opening than operating, although again, expanding businesses is very difficult as well. Yeah.
Frekka, I'm sorry, Councilor Ette.
It's when I read, excuse me, it's when I read number one.
Is your mic on? Thank you.
This is better. Better?
Yes.
I'm a little scared of. Okay, excuse me. What I wanted to say is that when I read number one, the obvious response was about housing, but that is being treated somewhere else. And so I was thinking that the focus is actually more on how the town is working to get businesses here to diversify the business base. And so I'm just wondering if the town has made a sufficient effort to encourage businesses or at least business ideas from the university and from Amherst College. These are world-class institutions, intellectual property, and perhaps there's a space that could be tapped from those entities.
Okay. At this point, well, it's a great question. I don't see anybody jumping to answer it for the moment. I'm sorry, George, Ryan?
So four always puzzled me, and I mentioned that back when we talked about this in January. But I think it's a little clear in my head today. I'm asking myself, what's the, what's the problem this is supposed to be, that lies behind this? What's the issue? And when I think of it, I think of rental conversions, rental conversions. In other words, houses that are flipping from homeownership to rentals. Certainly something I heard a lot about while I was campaigning. It's something that other councillors have talked about in the past. I'm not completely one way or the other, but I have tried over the years myself to try and get a handle on just what is the problem, get some data. So one question is, can we actually get some data about this issue? The second then is, can we think about what possibly could be done, assuming the data shows that there's a problem? It's all anecdotal. You talk to somebody who just has a house that's homeowner-occupied, flips to a student, it's the end of the world. But if the reverse happens, silence. So I think this is an issue that certainly I've heard a lot about. Could we look into it at some point? How would we do it? I tried to get data, I still keep trying to get data about this issue and then see where it would take us. Second thing quickly, love what I'm hearing from Dave. Just, I would say, we would be saying to staff and to Paul, keep talking to, partnering with and working with UMass and with Amherst College in the area of economic development and housing. Just constant, constant, constant. Sounds like that's what you're doing. I know some talks are going on with Amherst College, but please, that's the other elephant in the room is our educational institutions and our relationship with them and partnering with them for these areas of economic development and housing.
Okay, and Pam, Rooney?
Thank you. I'm gonna build on what George just said and Councilor Ette. And that is again, working with UMass, just for instance, because the first comment was that number one was very, was very broad. And do we have any specifics? A number of years ago, there was the off-campus meal plan, which allowed folks to come in and spend dining dollars in downtown restaurants. I don't know if it was successful. I think it was probably halted at the request of UMass because it drained money out of their dining halls and allowed folks to come downtown and eat. That's, I think, is a really good example of where that needs, that kind of thing needs to be reestablished because so much of, because so much has been drawn into the university internally rather than encouraging and forcing them to be more outward-facing.
Paul?
Thank you. So I think I had the same, looking at your rankings and how you prioritize things was very important. I had the same reaction Mandy Jo had to looking at this ranking for item two. That, that was, I saw that that was one of the universal high-priority items along with the public, you know, the public construction projects. So that really was informative to me in reviewing all of this data quickly this afternoon.
Are there any other questions on this? I'm going to suggest a 10-minute break. And then we're going to come back and decide how much more we're gonna get done. Make sure you turn your camera off and your mic. Make sure you turn your camera off and your mic. All right, let's keep, let's start moving back to our seats. Would you hit voice?
Okay. Thanks.
All right, when you come back, please turn your photo back on, your video. So, as we move forward and keeping in mind a hard stop, I'd like to suggest that we take advantage of the fact that we have the town manager and the assistant town manager here. And we hear their feedback on each of the goals for, each of the sub-goals, if you will, for four, five, and six. And then, to the extent we have time tonight, we'll go back and have discussions, but that we could hopefully start putting aside a small amount of time, at least at future council meetings, to have that conversation as well. Is there anybody that disagrees with that approach? Okay. So, Paul, we're going to go on to, and David, I'm sorry. We're going to go on to affordable housing. And let me just also say, I, I don't think we've said enough thank you to the staff and to the two of you for providing, you know, the input. And I understand at this point, it's conversational. But for many of us, it's just really good back and forth and good conversation. So, thanks so much. So, we're going to start with goal five. Four, this one is loaded.
Yeah. And Dave is going to lead on this.
And Dave's going to lead, okay.
Sure. So, thank you Lynn, and thank you for the conversation. I mean, I find this very helpful as well, and I'm sure Paul does too. It's nice to have the conversation and dialogue about these things and, and have this give and take. So, under this goal, we have objectives. Number one, ensure the operation of a seasonal and year-round shelter. You know, I think Paul and I and, and our police department, fire department, CRES, inspection services spend a tremendous amount of time supporting Craig's Doors and the shelter at the ILC. It's been, been operating extremely well over the past few years. We're very pleased with the way our partnership is going with Craig's Doors. And of course, as you know, utilizing ARPA funds, one of your goals was for the town manager to move forward on a permanent shelter. We're doing that right down the street at the VFW. We'll be hiring an architect very shortly and then launching a public process for visioning on a permanent shelter with supportive housing above in the coming months. So, that's number one. Would you like me to just keep going Lynn?
Keep going. And, you know, again, we'll come back to the extent that we have time tonight.
So, number two, I think we all recognize we have a housing crisis in Amherst. There's a housing crisis in the region, and it extends to the entire state. We're not alone. We can only do what we can do. But we do need to be part of the regional discussion and regional solutions. I think all of us have been on panels. We've attended workshops. We've attended panels. I remember the one not too long ago at Amherst College with some of the, some legislators and, and the governor's staff. And so, I'm very proud that we're working with great, great collaborators, partners like Valley CDC, Wayfinders, and many more. But, you know, the, the 30-home homeownership project up on Ball Lane just made its way through the permitting process. That's an extremely exciting project in my old neighborhood in North Amherst. And then, of course, we have Wayfinders coming in with 78 units of rental housing, deeply affordable rental housing at East Street School and Belcher Town Road. We're also combining funds on both of those locations. We're putting in CDBG funds at the same time to extend sidewalks and do new sidewalks in front of the East Street School, which will benefit not only the, the future residents of those, those apartments, those units, but also children and families who are utilizing the new Fort River School. And then we're extend, we're using CDBG funds as well to extend the sidewalks all the way, all the way up to the corner of Old Farm Road, east toward Belcher Town in front of many of the apartment complexes there. If you've ever walked on that stretch, it's a very challenging stretch with a very narrow old sidewalk. So, these are ways we're combining housing funds and housing partnerships. Each of those projects, I don't have the total in my head, but I'm going to guess it's probably on the order of $80 million between the two of those projects. So, we're putting in CDBG funds, CPA funds, ARPA funds to leverage those projects. So, really happy about those. So, that kind of blended two and three. I think we can do more on the homeownership front. I think if any of you have been part of some of the discussions with Valley CDC as they've come through the, the various processes in town, they have been very successful at getting tremendous funding for that project. Those, those units are going to be deeply, deeply affordable in the homeownership category. That is extremely challenging. How do you build those units in this, in this economy, in this climate, when, when units to build are between $500,000, $600,000 per unit? And then you're able to offer them on the order of somewhere in, in the $200,000, $225,000 range? That's an incredible project. On the homeownership front, we have challenges. We have the cost, cost of raw materials. We have the availability of subsidies and tax credits. We have land, a limitation on land, and time. And I think that's where we can partner, staff can partner with you. We need to be advocating more to the state or more resources through DHCD for those kind of deeply affordable homeownership opportunities. We can move these projects. I think we've proven with 132 North Hampton Road, with the Ball Lane project, Wayfinders has yet to come through the process. I think we've proven that we can move, we as a community, our permitting process can move fairly quickly to get these through the, through our process. But to get the state funding sometimes takes years. Some of these projects might take seven years from vision to cutting a ribbon. That is a very long time to have loans, to have staff, attorneys, and all the soft costs associated with this. So, I think that's something we can do at the local level is we've got to do more advocating for more permit, more funding and, and a quicker turnaround at the state level. Let's see, attainable rental housing, I think we've talked about that. We are also putting more ARPA funds into emergency assistance and emergency stabilization through family outreach. Let's see, what else? We're, we're talking with Amherst College and our partners at the university about how they might be able to help us on the land front. I think we all know that the governor has asked all state agencies to look at their land, to look at any surplus land. Are there ways that the university could help us with the, the land-based challenge? I don't, I don't have anything specific. I'd like more information on number five. I think that's something to be talked about. I'd like a little more definition on that one. And then, I think, number six, we are going after every possible dollar we can in affordable, for affordable housing. I think we're working closely with our Affordable Housing Trust. As you know, they're a great repository for CPA funds, for private dollars. They may be the recipient in the future of dollars coming from a, you know, possible downtown project. So, I think working with the Housing Trust is a key element of our, of our collaboration to get more units in the pipeline. And we're always trying to keep planes on the tarmac, if you will, have things moving forward. And I think the other piece of this is what properties in Amherst, what properties does the town own that we can keep moving through that process? So, we've got, East Street School was essentially a surplus property, a property that we didn't have a use for. It is now going to be repurposed as affordable housing. We're going to be looking very closely at the South Amherst campus, which is a piece of property that has been unused by the schools and now by the town for some years. We're going to be looking at land we have off of Strong Street. And then, of course, we still have the frontage on Hickory Ridge to look at. So, my goal is to always have projects in the pipeline, ready to go in redevelopment. So, I think I'll stop there and take questions, or Paul, if you wanted to add anything, if I missed anything.
Paul?
Yes, thank you. So, one of the, you know, we're working on a lot of the different projects. And one of the projects that will take an enormous amount of time, presented itself as a solution, it was a sort of an opportunity that town staff had identified and sought out, and that's the permanent shelter. And that's going to be a multi-year project that's going to require significant investment of funds, and will, town funds as well as mostly state, we hope, long-term. But I think that's one of the things we want to make sure we're on the same page as the council, that that continues to be a hot, a top priority because we are dedicating a lot of time and effort into moving that project forward. So, just wanted to say, because a lot of these things are sort of moving on their own, and this one is going to be propelled by the town staff specifically, I think.
Okay. Quick comments on this so we can at least cover the input for the others. Pam?
Thank you. I was pleased to hear Dave mention Hickory Ridge. And I think one of the, I'm not sure where it's covered, but providing information to us and to the public about sort of the status of the planning for Hickory Ridge is...
April 8th, I will be giving a PowerPoint to the council.
Thanks. Thank you. That's very good news. This, sort of the status of Hickory Ridge, the status of the other quote-unquote surplus properties or just the policy for dealing with surplus properties, I think is, is a really good step in the, in the motion.
Absolutely. So, just, I will, during agenda setting today, talked with Lynn and Paul about giving a presentation on everything that's happening at Hickory Ridge, including opportunities for reuse of the frontage. And I do want to, before Athena kicks me under the table, I misuse the word surplus earlier. We need to keep, keep in mind, we have a draft surplus property policy, but that is when the town wants to dispose of that property. I more was speaking about repurposing. There are, there may be surplus properties, but there are also properties we want to repurpose. And I saw Athena looking my way, and I knew that I had veered into a danger area. So, no. Yeah.
And that...
Yes, I am.
Yeah. That policy has already come out of the Finance Committee, and I think at this point, it's on for April 8th. But we were trying to balance agendas, so there's not too much on one night.
Yes. And I just mentioned...
I just want to clarify that the surplus property policy that we discussed only applies when the town manager has decided we don't, we no longer need it for any purpose.
Thank you. In other words, we are now declaring it surplus. Okay. Yes.
And I meant keeping it and repurposing, in this case, for housing. There could be other potential uses that we look at as well, and we'll talk a little bit about that at Hickory Ridge. We know it's been mentioned in the context of a South Amherst Fire Station, and perhaps we'll have time to talk about that in a minute, in another section.
Okay. Kathy?
I want to go back to, Paul asked a question about the permanent shelter. And as I said early, I didn't really follow the instructions for our exercise, which was to use all my numbers. I just went for my ones and twos, and I never put a four, five, and six. But what I noticed is many rated it less than a one, two, or a three. And my understanding is, this is potentially, Paul, you said it's time and effort, but it's time, effort, and dollars in terms of before it becomes a reality. So, tonight is probably not the time to have a longer discussion of this, but I, I am not sure we thought, considered the entire cost of the project when we had what seemed to be free ARPA money to buy a building. So, I just want to go back at some point to take a look at that because I thought it was striking how many people gave it a relatively low score among the housing issues. That, that's my only comment on, on this issue.
Counselor Hanke?
Two quick comments. The first one is, this is the other one where sub-goal three received a majority of councilors in their top 10 ranking, beyond the major capitals, where we'll see the other five, the other three of the five that got a majority of councilors. So, I wanted to point that out, and that is proposing measures to retain, promote, and increase homeownership opportunities for low and moderate income residents and first-time homebuyers. But my other comment is, it was great of you, Dave, to run down projects regarding housing, but items two, three, and four are about measures. And I see that as legislation. And none of that was discussed. And so, I, I think we've done as a town a great job at supporting outside developers and their projects. But what we don't do a good job at is planning to promote through zoning and other measures, TIF bylaws, other things like that, housing. And so, I, I would love in a future discussion to hear the planning part, the zoning part, the other part of how we can promote housing and how the town council can help do that by passing measures.
Yeah. Happy to do that in a future day. I will say, zoning to promote homeownership, that piece of it is a lot more complicated than, say, but I did mention certainly the initiative in East Amherst and U Drive is really all about that. Frankly, it's more about housing than it is about commercial and retail development because we know some of the challenges with that. But those initiatives by the Planning Board, particularly the one on U Drive, which is more further along, the one on, in the East Village is more in a staff development, certainly speaks to some of that. But yeah, the homeownership piece relative to zoning is, is a bit more of a challenge. Absolutely. If I could, just, the one thing I wanted to make a point on, the, the shelter, is that our goal, although it's not fully designed process yet, is that, yes, there would be staff resource, or excuse me, town resources put into that project. We know we're putting ARPA funding into the acquisition, the conceptual design, demolition. But very quickly after that, our goal is to RFP the site for a developer to come in and build a shelter with associated housing. So, we, you know, we, Paul has made it crystal clear. We know we are not in the sheltering business. This would be very similar to other affordable housing projects where we would RFP the site. And we've already had some preliminary conversations broadly with a number of developers who might be interested in such a project. They're happening, by the way, all over the state. So, this is not a, a new model. Many other communities are using this hybrid shelter with permanent supportive housing in the same complex. So, that's our, our goal. Undoubtedly, there may be an ask, more additional asks of, say, CPA funds, CDBG funds, et cetera. But it would not be, you know, we would not be the central funder on a, a multi-multi-million dollar project like that.
Okay. Jennifer?
Yeah, again, responding, I think there was a question of what could the town do in terms of number five? And again, I would say, well, one thing they could do in conversations with the university, I mean, this is perennial ask, is to, students having to move off-campus puts a lot of pressure on the local housing market and certainly drives prices up for homeownership and for rental dwellings. So, encouraging the university to build more housing on campus and, you know, maybe even to build housing off-campus for its faculty, administrators, and other employees. That would help to expand... That would help to expand our, you know, long-term year-round population of households that also send children to our schools, and we'll use our new library. University Drive is a measure that the Planning Department and Planning Board, and that helps to stabilize neighborhoods. And then there's, we can not make changes that help destabilize neighborhoods, like, I think, maintaining the four occupant limits for non-related members of households, because, you know, like, an effort to increase that number just makes it more profitable for investors to purchase the single-family houses, because it makes that much more income that can be generated. So there's things we can do and things we cannot do to help to stabilize housing for our long-term residents.
Bob Hegner?
Yeah, the reason I ranked homeownership so high was that it really is the only way to, for people to, you know, increase their opportunities for intergenerational wealth transfer, and renting doesn't do that. Renting is great, but it's not the same thing as homeownership. The one thing that I'm offering to you as a thought is, other communities where housing prices and land prices are very high, the opportunities for younger people, for new homeownership, is through condos and townhouses. And we don't have a whole lot of those in Amherst. And I think if we could encourage more of that kind of development, that would ease, that would make it more affordable for people.
Thank you. Councilor Walker?
Thank you, Lynn. I also just second what Bob and Jennifer just said. One of the other barriers that I would like to see addressed, and I know I've mentioned this before, but a lot of surrounding towns have down payment assistance programs for first-time homebuyers that Amherst does not have. And I know we have the Affordable Housing Trust, but it only offers one large down payment to one family, and so I would like to see something a little bit more encompassing that first-time homebuyers might be able to access, because for, in order to increase opportunities for low-income and moderate-income residents, even if the house itself is a bit more affordable, or there's more condo opportunities, like, down payments are still a barrier. And so I would like to see us explore that option. And also, I think it was number five, stabilizing housing for long-term residents. So I was thinking about it a little bit more in terms of rentals and renters, just because that's what I'm more familiar with. And what I've seen is that people who have lived in their units for a very long time are still facing increases. Like, my mom's rent is increasing every single year by hundreds of dollars. And so, like, is there a way that we can monitor that, or incentivize landlords to not do that? Or provide more assistance to families that is not just emergency assistance when they're behind on rent and facing eviction, but just, again, with the goal of stabilizing housing? And I know that Amherst Community Connections was looking to pilot a program that would do such a thing, but they didn't get enough funding to do so. And I think looking into those kinds of things is what, part of the reasons why I ranked those two a little bit higher than others.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan?
I'm hoping that the low ranking that Item Number 8 got is just a reflection of the fact that this is a long, five-year process that's going to involve many pieces. But I, this is, my marks are addressed to my colleagues here, because I think the town staff has done a really superlative job and has worked really hard on this, but it will require our continued commitment to the goal of eventually creating a permanent shelter in this town. Homelessness is an issue that I think we cannot ignore. It is a regional problem. We cannot solve it ourselves, but this is our, I think, a very important attempt for us to say this is something we need to do. And I understand that it's a long process, and it's got many moving parts, but I hope that we will never lose our commitment to it.
Thank you. And I just, as Councilor Ryan has pointed out, Number 5, 8 is the same, essentially, not completely, as 4, 1. They both deal with the homeless shelter. Pat DeAngelis?
Like Bob Hegner, I support the development of duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, condos. And several of us work very diligently to address zoning, and we're often stymied by the work of the Planning Department. So I guess I'm looking to the town manager and the assistant manager to help me understand how we can motivate the Planning Department, let alone the Planning Board, but the Planning Department to address this kind of housing, which they've avoided for a variety of reasons.
Anna?
I wasn't sure. Did, Dave, did you want to-
David?
I, it's, I would take that under advisement. It's a great question. I think it's for a longer discussion. I'm not sure I would agree with the characterization of the Planning Staff and their approach to that. I think I would characterize it as, what was proposed was not deemed to likely show as many results from that zoning change that the proponents of that change thought it might. So that's-
That interpretation.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm, I, you know, I'm basing that on the advice of planners with decades of experience, so that's the best I can do this evening.
Anna?
Sorry, I got distracted. Okay. Yeah, I wanted to clarify, I, looking at Goal 4, Subgoal 1, operation of a seasonal year-round shelter, I put that as number 3 for a similar reason as some folks, when they looked at the elementary, the same reason, Kathy, that you talked about when you looked at the elementary school. Because when I looked at that goal, I said, yes, absolutely, I think this is important, but we've made such significant progress, and I know that one of the next steps would be to put up and seek bids for someone to develop it, and they would run it, right? And so for me, this is why I think it's important to not just look at the numbers and for us to explain some of the rationale. I absolutely do think that's critical. I didn't rank it as my number-one priority, because I felt that significant progress had been made, and I wanted the town manager's time to be spent more so on Subgoals 2 and 3.
Thank you. Kathy, one last comment, then I'm moving on.
Yeah, I just want to jump in on duplex, triplex, townhouses, that I think we've got market forces that were contending with the price of land, the price of construction, because if you look at towns around us, that there's no barrier to building them. It's just they don't come in very cheap anymore. You know, up in Sunderland, they have an entire, it was astonishing what each of them sold for. So that's one of the things the whole region is contending with, that even where you're zoned to allow something, you'd rather build a big apartment building than a three-person. So I think at some point, we shouldn't jump to that we've got a barrier in our regs. We should be able to get some kind of analysis of what these market forces look like. So it's, and just, Mandy, you said you look at the word measures, and it means policies. I think measures can be interpreted by each of us in the way we want to. So I think actions are measures as well as policies. But I just, I don't want us to think, because I'm looking up in our area, why don't we have more ADUs? We allowed ADUs anywhere you want them, and we haven't gotten very many. So there's a market out there and a construction cost that's working against us.
Okay. I'm going to move on to major capital investments. There was some clear consensus here. Probably the most clear consensus among all the goals. And I think some people like myself said, well, I want this before I want this, or I want that before I want this. And I would give it one or, you know, a couple here and a couple there. And at the same time, I'm just echoing what I heard earlier, most of us, having been at the groundbreaking yesterday, are saying, hey, that elementary school's moving on. But as David has reminded us, the staff still has a lot to do. The library, the same thing. I'll take my double X away when we break ground there. Okay? I want to just keep making sure it goes where. So is, are there comments that Paul and David, you want to make on the items here?
Yeah, so I will group them. Numbers 1 and 2, they're ongoing. We know we're committed to those. As Dave mentioned, Lynn just mentioned, that Planning, DPW, Inspection Services are all going to continue to dedicate significant time to these two projects. They're big projects, the largest projects in the history of the town. So, but we've broken ground on one, and the procurement is a huge piece of it, so that is moving forward as well, especially for both projects. 3, 4, and 5 are the ones that you just identified, and it was consensus, in my reading of your document, is that highest priorities for the council, and hearing that loud and clear. So the way we're prioritizing these is that I want to work on a financing plan for you while we have the skill set of Sandy Poole with us, and that would be targeting a July 1 date, by to have that ready, something like that, ready. In terms of identifying a location for the DPW, we're hoping to have something for sure by the end of the summer. And then in terms of a location for the DPW, for the fire EMS, we're putting a deadline of October 1 on that. So we, I want to put dates out there, so you can start to look at it and start to hold us more accountable, then I think you have some frustration for that, and I think we want to start to target some deadlines for ourselves. The youth center and the senior center, those are, the Banks Community Center is an ARPA-driven deadline, so that is something we have to have designs for, and then a way to set aside funds for by the end of this calendar year. And then for the Youth Empowerment Center, where there work, there needs to be work done in terms of identifying potential, the needs, and available facilities. And there's more than one way to create, if we, if the town wants to create a youth empowerment center, we want to come up with different options available. The year, and then this is the one where the development of the year-round shelter really came up. It was in the previous goal, but this is the actual construction. And one of the things that, the reason, one of the reasons we brought it up, is that it received a relatively low ranking of 5.75, or at least, so that's, I want to make sure that we were dedicating time and energy to this project, and I want to make sure that we're on the same page as the council, and Councilor Ryan has already identified it, and other councilors have said, yes, it is a priority. So we're working under that assumption. If we're wrong, please say something, because this is a project that, as Dave said, once we get it into a situation, we get an RFP, which will take time and effort, we want to give it to a developer who will then move it forward. So, and when we say developer, what we really mean is probably a nonprofit developer, and there are plenty out there, as Dave said, who are really interested in this. So that's how-
You skipped 6. I don't think it was on purpose.
6?
Roads and sidewalks.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so that's one, I think, was the idea on this, is to present a multi-year plan, and that's something we can, we're not going to be able to do that, then we can sort of do what we did last time, but to develop the multi-year plan is going to take us a little bit longer during the course of this year. But it'll be before the bids go out in the winter. Typically, we go out to bid in the winter for next year's roads.
Yeah. I'm going to just jump in and say, if I hadn't used up all of my rankings on the fire station and DPW and the financial plan, I would have had some left for those two others.
Which two others?
Roads and sidewalks, and the, see, again, I'm thinking the senior center's a done deal, the youth center, we need more information. I probably would have given more for the year-round shelter.
Okay.
But it's just, you know, I used up 3 right on that solid block, as did many other people. Kathy?
Paul, I heard you say you were going to be potentially coming to us with a plan on DPW. One of my questions that, since these have just been working out in background, is the current site of DPW, can't we just rebuild there, a DPW? And so I'm going to have a lot of questions on whether we have to purchase another place. And I know that's been, we're going, and I don't need you to answer now, but I just think of the property we already own, can't we make use of it? And can we give up the thought that everything DPW owns has to be in the same place, because we have another place we can store some of the vehicles? So just thinking through what makes sense there, and the financing plan clearly is what order we do these things in. So just on the one other, we had the beginning of a conversation, Pam and others, when you were saying the word surplus, but if we talk about reuse, we're going to have, it's not ours yet, but at some point, the Wildwood property will become available, and putting it into the mix, and we can't put it into the mix till the town has it, and I understand that, but trying to think of, would that be redeveloped? And one of my thoughts, and it'll be among many, could be, could the first floor be public use, and could the upstairs be apartments? So we do a different kind of mixed use, where we get something, we want to keep, we want to keep the gym, we want to keep some piece of it, but upstairs, people can live, because it's got 14 acres, and it's got, it's got, it's got land, it's got a parking lot. So I just think, you know, these are one-year goals, but trying to think of, over the next three or four years, what's possible with what we already own. And the other way to think about Wildwood is if DPW needs to partly move, it could be swing space for DPW while something is being built, you know, but just, it's a mix of a complex set of issues, and I don't know what the council can grasp. I mean, it takes a lot of people thinking about it, so what I don't know is how much staff time you've got to really, you know, get into the nuts and bolts of this. And that's a question I'm just going to leave with, because I don't think there's an answer right now.
Andy?
Yeah, I just want to comment on how I came about the priorities, because it partly answers the question Paul was raising about the seasonal and year-round shelter. That one, I was one that I felt was no longer something that required a lot of attention from the council, because I felt that we were in a phase now where we owned a piece of property, and staff, you guys, were working on what the, how to use and how to make that happen within the property, and therefore, you'd come to the council when action from the council is necessary, but it wasn't one we were going to spend a lot of time on. The reason that I put finding a location for the fire station and for the DPW so high is that I can't help but reflect that I recall being on the Finance Committee back when John Michanti was town manager, and Sandy Poole was in his first run at being the Finance Director, and we were already working on that question. How do we get those, how do we get those four projects done? How do we get them financed, and how do we get them done? And it seems like we're so close on some of these things, who we just need to keep moving them along, because, you know, I've now in my third term on the council, after the gym, so on the select board, and some time on Finance Committee, and I feel like we're talking about the same thing. And so maybe it is time, in my book, to move it along before I, while I'm still on earth. The, and which brings me to the last thing I was going to say was, I really think that it's important that we think about that Pomeroy property. I think that there was a feeling that we finally had a good location for the fire station, and we really could move forward with it. And I don't understand why it has taken so long to close out a decision on that, that it's either the right or the wrong place, because it just seems like there was this broad consensus that it was a place that worked, but on- but on, but it was tough and that we could make a very usable and accessible spot there. And so I just sort of, a little bit of frustration is in my thinking about why I put that as to such a high priority. I just think we can close it out and be done.
Counselor Hanke.
I want to echo Kathy's comments about DPW and, and Andy's comments about making a decision on fire. I know there, I've heard there's disagreement amongst whether we should move forward at Pomeroy with fire or whether we should hold out for DPW. So I, I assume that will be part of reports coming in. But, but I want to urge, it's clear, these are the other three that got of the five. This is extremely important to this council. Many of us, a majority of us, I think, have been on this council five years and it's been important for five years. And I think we're getting tired of waiting. And I think these rankings show we're getting tired of waiting. I, I would like and to encourage, well, five for just this council. I encourage creativity with DPW. I know there's been a desire to keep it all on one site, but after decades, I don't think we can ignore the possibility of needing to split it up or needing to make the footprint smaller by going higher, so that you don't need as large of a piece of property. Or ignore the possibility of looking at our zoning and seeing if there are proper zoning changes that could be made to make more properties feasible to put DPW due to increased, potentially increasing lot coverages or reducing parcel, you know, something about lot coverage maximums or impervious surface maximums in certain areas for town services. I think we, it's time, it's past time to get creative about how to put a DPW in this town.
George.
Paul, you set a deadline, I might not say for the fire EMS is October 1. I just didn't catch the deadline for DPW.
September 1.
September 1, thank you. And then.
You mentioned the multi-year plan for sidewalks and the road.
Excuse me. You, what you said was that the amount would be a little smaller than it's been in the past. Is that correct? Or did I mishear you? I may not.
No, I said two things. One was, we can do an educational session like we did a couple of years ago to the TSO committee that talks about how we prioritize. And then this, this, this goal identifies a multi-year plan and that wouldn't happen until later in the calendar year.
Right. Yes, I heard him say it will take a little longer. But that's, okay. We're going to move on to goal six. And why don't we start with any updates?
So goal six is racial equity and social justice. The first one is use a racial and social justice lens when making decisions. Again, we see this as an ongoing thing. Goal, just like we did, looked with, with climate action. Part of this includes taking it in a review of town department policies and decisions using the equity lens. We actually began this conversation with departments back in 2022. The, we've got a little bit sidetracked because the key people from the DEI director were involved in the interim leadership team for the Crest department. And then they're also looking at securing an actual assessment tool. They think that having a common tool that we can apply to every department is important. The second is to support the work of the town in repairing the damage of structural racism. So one, some of the efforts of the DEI department are about having a series of events aimed to engage community members in learning and dialogue about DEI topics. Many of you have participated in some of these. The, the initiative of becoming a beloved community led by Dr. Love and would build on the National Day of Racial Healing that has happened. The next event is on April 4th and there's a number of other events that are already scheduled to have that, it's, it's conversation, it's a dialogue on that. Number three is provide training regarding racial equity rights and other options to the town council employees and members of the public. So the DEI department continues to provide monthly workshops and targeted training specifically through by department. The DEI department does offer trainings to the town council. If it chooses to avail themselves to those trainings, they're available to help with that. The next one is begin to identify and propose revisions to policies, bylaws, and regulations to dismantle structural racism. So this sort of already addressed this a little bit in terms of the overall goal, but one of the specific goals that we're having an active discussion now is about marijuana and cannabis regulations and bringing a social justice lens to, to all of our policies on the permitting and regulation of cannabis. This is also a goal of the Cannabis Control Commission. They're issuing new guidelines. Our planning department and licensing group is, are actively looking at this and what it means for our town. And the last one is to incorporate input from BIPOC LGBTQ plus and other marginalized communities and appropriate town committees when reviewing and revising policies and regulations. So the DEI department really sees their main conduit of hearing from other, from groups is because they staff the Human Rights Commission, the Disability Access Advisory Committee, and the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. And they depend on these volunteers and people who serve on these committees to help guide their work. We have not made very much progress with an English speaking population, non-English speaking populations. They're aware of the challenges that that presents. And so, again, and this is where the equity assessment tool will become in handy, because I think this will be something that where we can judge how the town is doing across all of our departments.
Okay. George, you have your hand up.
Just to maybe try to explain some of my rankings, such as they are. I mean, like many of these, I struggled to try and put numbers to this. Question mark doesn't mean, I don't think it's important. I think what it means is that I'm trying to, I mean, for instance, number one is I assume simply a given, that we use a racial and social justice lens when making decisions. So I don't know, you know, priority one, I guess, but I mean, it's just a given. Number two, likewise, question mark, I guess for me, a lot of what I think of as racial justice is involved with actual concrete actions. So homeownership, the new school, a thriving Crest program, programs related to youth empowerment, and we're still waiting to see what will happen with reparations. So those are the kinds of things I look to. The other items, you know, they have value. I think for this number three, we have asked the staff to do DEI training. Seems that the council should do this. So that would be my thought there. Just a brief comment about my sort of strange numbers.
Okay. Counselor Ette.
So number three says, provide training regarding racial equity, rights, and other options to the town council. And I'm wondering what other options mean.
Paul?
I did not write this. I would like the council to say what they meant.
Another one of those vague references at the end of a sentence. You, if you'd like to fill in the blank, perhaps you have an idea. Pat wants to fill in the blank. Ah, no, Councilor Lord wants to fill in the blank.
Well, I read it as, like, trainings around, wait, what number is it again?
Number three.
Thank you. Racial equity rights and other options to me would be like maybe the history and strategizing different ways to dismantle the oppression, as opposed to like, not trainings, but just other things that would help propel us to actually use a lens deeply, deeply embedded in equity and stuff beyond just racial equity. And what was the second thing? Rights, quote unquote, rights.
So it might, might be events as well. Okay. Pat, you have your hand up on this one too. I'm sorry.
One of the things that I've been talking to the folks from Embrace Race, Melissa Giraud and Andrew.
We can't hear you, Pat.
And Andrew Grant Thomas. And they have a program called Drawing Difference. We've been taught to be silent.